Instructions for accessing subtitles in a language other than English are included on our board meetings webpage as well as in the description below. Instrucciones para acceder a los subtítulos en un idioma que no sea el inglés se incluyen en nuestra página web de reuniones de la junta así como en la descripción a continuación.
Hello and welcome to the Ross Valley Board of Trustees regular meeting for Wednesday, December 14th. We are all in attendance although we are missing Marie Onrio who will be with us at some point here shortly. Calling the meeting to order, it is 6:04 PM as I said on December 14th. Our first item is going into closed session. We do not have any public attendees here for any comments regarding our closed session items. Those two closed session items are conference with real property negotiators for 19940th Avenue and a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation which is significant exposure to one demand by Bill Madsen to cure or correct an action taken during our November 9th meeting to approve Resolution 092223. Those are our two closed session items so I will now at 6:05 PM recess us to closed session. Hello everybody, welcome. It is Wednesday, December 14th. This is the Ross Valley Board of Trustees regular meeting and I am reconvening us back into open session out of our closed session and it is 7:10 PM for our reconvening. As we do with all of our meetings, we are going to start with our procedural items and as we are here today with a full forum of the board in the district office, I wanted to acknowledge the space that we are in and that we are having this meeting located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin and Southern Tsunamaka counties. And as such, we honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm gonna take my moment to do a short reflection. And I thought tonight that I might just make a couple of comments as we are doing some transitions this evening for our council, for trustee up here to reflect again on why I started, just taking a few minutes at the beginning of every board meeting to reflect on our shared experience of democracy and civic engagement that we experienced through these proceedings. It was really in reaction when I first started here on the board to the idea of reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and thinking about it as as a ritual that like most rituals has a pattern to it as something that's done in a similar way with a similar context again and again, but also as a ritual that it has a purpose greater than just the words that are spoken. So rituals are, any ritual like the Pledge of Allegiance is intended to bring people together in a common experience and a common moment of reflection. And so I, like many people actually that I've heard from since after I've been doing these, was feeling that just reciting the words of the Pledge of Allegiance, I was having a hard time feeling that sense of connection and that sense of deeper purpose and meaning and the things that ritual is supposed to do in our lives. So I was taking a moment to do some reflecting before I personally stood up to say the Pledge of Allegiance and decided that I would take a bit of a risk and share those reflections publicly with my colleagues up here for us to create some sense of collective experience and also for the community who's involved in our meetings to have that sense of our shared civic life together. So it was not intended to be a lecture or to educate and I know some of them might sound, sometimes it might sound a little bit more like that and it's not intended to be that way. So I wanted to just acknowledge that and apologize if it ever does come across and welcome my colleagues and anyone can give me feedback on that if it does come across that way, that's not my intention. That my intention really is with this moment of reflection to ground our proceedings by rooting us in our common sense of place, time, and sense of community and to affirm our shared values and aspirations. So and then from that place of shared grounding and aspiration, we then can respectfully and compassionately move into our agenda items which are not always going to be grounded in a commonality where we might not share viewpoints or we might not be aligned but that if we start with that sense of grounding in what we share, that we can then move into that space where we might not agree in a different way. So for some the aspiration might be in the civic words of creating more perfect union with life, liberty, and justice for all. For others, it might come from the Miwok land acknowledgement where we honor ancestors, past, present, and emerging. For some it might be a mix of both or for others it might just be your own personal time to observe and reflect. And that's the intention. So one other way that we're all bound together in our kind of civil engagement here is through the laws that guide our procedures. And as you'll see later in an item tonight, some of those laws have to do with the Brown Act and the way that we conduct our meetings up here. So we do have that law that binds us together and those legal proceedings and requirements for us. And so just, you'll get more detail later tonight on one of our agenda items about stuff around the Brown Act. But that in general is part of what are called the Sunshine Acts in California and the intention of those laws and regulations are to make board business accessible and open to the public. And as I think I mentioned before, those acts are about making our Board of Trustees meetings accessible to the public, that these meetings are the business of the board held in the public, that the Brown Act is not a series of regulations to make these public meetings. They are to make the board's business meetings accessible and transparent to the public. And that's the intention of those Brown Act Sunshine Acts. And like I said, there'll be more details, there'll be some more details later on tonight about that. But so I just wanted to note that our proceedings are guided both by our shared values and our shared aspirations but they're also guided by our legal regulations and those are our shared legal regulations. And those laws can be confusing sometimes and I acknowledge that they're not perfect. But we operate within that imperfection rather than operating in a completely lawless environment. And I for one appreciate having even imperfect laws versus lawlessness because I know there are many people in many places who do live under, without any of that kind of common shared law. So that's all I wanted to share tonight as we move into our meeting. And join me now if you'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And with that, our other procedural is the adoption of the agenda and the time allocation. So I would turn to my colleagues and see if any of you have any questions about the flow, the flow of the agenda tonight is a little bit different. One part two?
Yeah, one question.
No questions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion in a second and we'll vote. Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Anne Wright?
Aye.
And Shelley?
Aye.
All right, we have an adopted agenda and we can move on to communications. There is nothing to report out from closed sessions. There were no public comments. Oh, and now is the time for public comment regarding items that are not on our agenda. So is there anyone here tonight who has a comment to make about something that's not on our agendas or on our agenda tonight?
Just have a question.
Go ahead, just tell your name.
My name is Floriencia Parada and I have a question about the closed session. Do you report, what is about the closed session, what is the topics you discuss? And if it's a discussion about Deer Park, could this be in a public session discussion? Because in a closed session, I'm not sure how we practice inclusion when we have a closed session talking about Deer Park site and making decisions about it and the report that comes back, it doesn't feel or sound sometimes accurate or transparent with the communication and information that we're receiving from the closed session. And so you were talking this earlier but we couldn't understand because the translation is not working, right? And we have a 17-year-old son of the translator translating for us right now, a 17-year-old child who's translating, who's hired from the school district to translate, 17-year-old, who's going to do the interpretation of a very serious discussion today. So that's also not part of the agenda and I would like to conclude it. Thank you. And with all the respect to Sebastián who is doing a great job trying to explain the situation, but it's not his role. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to board announcements. So again, these are announcements of anything that you've been, not committee announcements, but any other things to bring in. We'll have to make.
I went to the White Hill Band Concert last night, which was great. So I got to see the three bands perform, the jazz band, concert band, and the samba band. So they did a great job last night.
Correspondence and communication with the board. We do have some items that I believe everyone has been informed on about those. And all the correspondence with the board is also uploaded publicly. Anything that comes in by 3 o'clock today gets uploaded into that place. And has been, okay. Do we do public comments on communications? Sure.
My name is Lucy Caneen. You make selective decisions about following the board communications policy, leaving many of us with questions about how you use electronic resources and messaging. You have a formal policy that was adopted in August 2016 to include all correspondence and communication from members of the public to the board received since the board's prior meeting on your agendas. The policy was adopted in August of 2016. So regarding the issue that is, the items that are listed on today's agenda, which is from anything received from 12/9 to 12/14. Tonight, today's meeting, Bob Davison's September and October emails to your business manager, not to the whole board, about insurance coverage are attached to the agenda. They didn't show up in the October 12th meeting, they didn't show up on the November 9th meeting. Why are they showing up now? And why was the center memo that was dated October 11th, 2022, that was directly germane to the Deer Park process, never attached the communication piece of the agenda despite inquiries about it, but now it's included on a December action item? It was addressed to the entire board, didn't show up. It's almost like you make strategic decisions whether to follow the policy or not and how or whether to use electronic communications or not. Since you never respond to public inquiries about issues raised like this one, you force the public into positions to either file PRAs, make formal complaints, and then you reflexively claim yourselves a victim to how litigious the environment is. But you can create these conditions. If you actually acted with transparency, there'd be a whole lot less explaining to do, manipulation of nonsense, and a whole lot less time and money. Both are critical resources. So review the policy about board communications and the use of district electronic communications and either toss it or follow it. But somebody has to explain a very confusing pattern of when you follow the policy and when you don't.
All right.
I apologize. The translator, the interpreter is confused. He's saying that he shouldn't translate the public, only what you suggest to translate, that is just a Deer Park piece. I'm trying to explain, Sebastián, that he could translate also what the public is talking, but he's telling me that that's not the instructions you gave him. So could you please, could you please explain?
For a second, sorry. I was supposed to translate the Deer Park update. She wants me to translate
Everyone.
Two minutes of whatever you guys were talking about. It's a little difficult. If you guys could slow down, I could translate it better for her.
Okay.
Okay, for all of us, not for me, for all of us.
For all of us, for all of you. Thank you.
Okay, we can slow down. And I know a lot of us are wearing masks this evening as many people are with the increasing. So maybe we can also work at, you know, just pronouncing and speaking up for that as well and also so that we can understand. So we will, we will do that. Is there anything else, usually? Okay. Okay, can you continue to translate?
And what he's saying that this is a show that I need to control. That's offensive, that's offensive.
Don't make it respectful that you're acting this way.
Okay, you know what, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pull it back. We've heard the public comment, we've heard your comments. And we're gonna go ahead.
Public comment, everyone in the room should understand no matter who is saying anything.
Okay, we're gonna, we are gonna move on to the presentation which is the two action items that are related to Deer Park. Please continue to translate, we will slow down and speak clearly. So our presentation action item part one is on a consideration of action on demand of Bill Madsen to cure or correct action taken November 9th, 2020 approving Resolution 092223. And we're gonna do what we
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes. Are you doing the headphones?
I am.
Do you want to sit up closer here?
I'll sit here as long as everyone has.
Just so that you can hear more clearly?
Oh, yeah.
I was just saying that way, if you sit up closer then you can hear more clearly and if you're speaking through a microphone, then you don't necessarily need to sit. That'd be great.
How this works?
You press the middle button, you hold it.
We're ready? Okay. So this first item is consideration of action on demand of Bill Madsen to cure or correct action taken November 9th, 2020 approving Resolution 092223. As we normally do, we will have a presentation first, we'll go out for public comment and, or we'll have a presentation first, we'll take any clarification questions from the board, we'll have public comment, and then we will bring it back to the board for further discussion and action. So let's go with the presentation, the update and the presentation.
All right, for this topic, the board will consider taking action pursuant to the demand of Bill Madsen to cure correct the action taken November 9th, 2022 to approve Resolution 092223. On December 6th, 2022, District Resident Bill Madsen submitted a demand to cure correct alleging the action taken by the governing board to approve Resolution 092223 failed to comply with applicable requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. In that resolution, the board authorized the formation and selection of the membership of a real property advisory committee, otherwise known as the 7-11 Committee in compliance with Education Code Sections 17388 and 17389. Mr. Madsen made a specific demand pursuant to Government Code Section 54960.1 that the board take action to cure or correct the asserted procedural deficiencies. The matter is being brought before the board for consideration of Mr. Madsen's demand and potential action. Would like to note that we follow the Brown Act and here are the ways that we followed it. For regular board meetings, the Brown Act requires that agendas be posted at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting and include a brief general description of each item. The board agenda for November 9th went live on Friday, November 4th, 2022, roughly 120 hours prior to the meeting. The subject and recommended action stated the intended action and the background information outlined an overview of the process we've been engaged in with the Fairfax-San Antonio Children's Center since May 2022 as well as links to all prior board meeting agendas and meeting recordings on these topics, the 7-11 Committee requirements and the process used to determine the committee slate. We gave far more than the very brief description required in the Brown Act in an effort to be as informative as possible. The Brown Act does not require other documents be posted at the time the agenda goes live, only that any documents provided to the board are also made available to the public at the same time. Resolution 092223 was posted at 3:17, the day of the meeting, and I then provided it to the trustees via email at 3:22 PM. So it was actually provided to the public before it was provided to the trustees. As I noted at the November 9th meeting, we were only able to fill all of the required criteria representing the committee, the 7-11 Committee composition, the day of the meeting. Once the 7-11 Committee application window closed and the resolution was finalized with the required composition of membership, I posted it and then sent it out to the board in advance of the meeting. So the resolution, which included the names of the recommended committee members, was posted in advance of the meeting. The Brown Act does not require us to project, open, or read attachments. There is also no Brown Act requirement that the board engage in discussion or debate prior to taking action. Just in terms of process, I do keep the board informed and our board does their homework. If they have any questions about any board agenda item, they reach out in advance of the meeting. And staff appreciates this so that we're able to answer any questions by including the information in our presentations for the benefit of all trustees or possibly any of community members who might also have similar questions. If questions are asked in the meeting by trustees, there is a possibility that the answer may need to be researched which may hinder the board's ability to conduct its business in a timely manner. So that you all ask questions in advance and make sure that everything that's posted is clear is really helpful to ensure that we are able to get through our agenda items and don't have to move any items to a future board meeting should you not be able to have enough information to take action at that meeting. The Brown Act does require the board allow for public comment on an agenda item, which is the opportunity for the public to provide input. Boards are allowed to establish reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of public comment. For instance, school boards typically set guidelines on the length of an individual's comment as an example of the certain amount of time given to each person so that no one person dominates the meeting. Our board has set guidelines and they are explained on our agendas. Shelley called for public comment a couple of times on this item on November 9th prior to the board taking action. As a reminder, all of the board's work is done in public except for closed session items. The board is conducting its meeting in public. It is not a community forum, it is not a town hall meeting. It is the board doing its work in public. The board is informed by public comment, but deliberation takes place between the board members. The action is the elected authority, sorry, the board is the elected authority that is entrusted with the responsibility to deliberate and make those decisions. I want to be clear again that all of the rules of the Brown Act were followed as per my explanation above. I do also want to explain the delay that this has caused. At the September 21st regular board meeting during our Deer Park Working Group update, we presented timelines on the identified pathways, which is Slide 20 of the presentation deck. The timelines for each of the pathways has not changed and the board has adopted a resolution to secure Fairfax-San Antonio Children's Center's occupancy through August 31, 2023. We have not even begun the necessary step, the 7-11 Committee, to reach our desired outcome of a sale of the Deer Park property to the Children's Center. And there is already a delay. As soon as the board took action on 11/9 to approve the slate of committee members, staff worked to secure a date for their first meeting. The 7-11 Committee was ready to meet the week of November 28th. However, due to the inquiries from this community member, the committee has been on hold. As much as we are doing on our end to secure removal along to the desired outcome, this delay was unexpected and beyond our control. As a district, we're doing everything in our power to secure this transaction in a timely manner and in accordance with our project timeline that was created to address the known safety issues within a reasonable amount of time. Supporting this process is a community-wide effort and it will take our community efforts to ensure that we do not experience any further delays. To avoid this transaction getting bogged down in lengthy and expensive legal challenges or other roadblocks that may occur to impact this transition or put it in jeopardy as ultimately that will hurt the Children's Center. We followed the Brown Act and the board has addressed the demand by putting all of the documents related to the November 9th board meeting for 09, Resolution 092223 to allow for public comment. We felt it better to repost and to have this potential action that you're going to take tonight rather than risk a lawsuit. So this item before you tonight reaffirms the action that you took on November 9th to approve the Resolution 092223.
Are there any clarification questions that the board has?
None from me.
No. No clarifications? No, okay. All right, so we will go out for public comment at this point on this act, on this item. Any public comment? If you could come to the podium, just state your name and your association and then speak slowly and clearly for them.
Well, I'm not gonna speak slowly and stick to three minutes. So you can decide whether you want to prioritize your time limit.
It's your choice.
Only one or two comments.
It's your choice.
No, you tell me. You want me to speak so that it can be translated or you want me to speak?
You have three minutes.
We only have two comments.
You have three minutes.
Okay, so you don't want the public to hear this?
You have three minutes.
Okay, understood. I'm not speaking to the Brown Act violation, which we all know is like a slap on the hands. That's not a reason to slow the process. You could have designed an opaque and a, you couldn't have designed a more opaque and succinct process for an advisory, non-binding pro forma committee that's mandated to engage public input. You didn't initiate a 7-11 Committee when you built this building and abandoned the district office. We built for you 20 years ago. You cited the 1985 surplus processes question. You didn't initiate a 7-11 Committee two years ago when you started meeting in closed session for two years. Months into this confusion, it could have been a Months into this confusion, it could have been a very straightforward piece of public process. You hire a legal firm. Most districts manage this process in-house, or minimally with basic help, basic help. You hired the law firm that engaged, that you engaged to facilitate denying access of this space to other educational entities. So then you engage in an opaque selection process, and you mangle the presentation of the resolution for the seven-eleven committee that fully buries the lead. Who's on the committee? There's people here in the audience who are applicants. They don't even know if they're on the committee or not. So the board's poised to just vote on a resolution without even asking for anything about the names of the committee. Okay, you had them. Those of us who checked the board agenda in the morning didn't see it. But you, you, the presentation is you passively repeat again the PowerPoint slides about what the, what the committee membership is. Were it not for an interruption from the audience by Bill, now the generator of a formal complaint, and who could blame him? The names would never have been presented. No vet, no talk about how they were vetted, who was vetted off, who was vetted on, who, who got excluded. This isn't how you build public trust. Okay, you didn't have a Brown Act violation. Congratulations. Quite the opposite. If you want to build, build public trust, you know, don't hire a lawyer who you've already been hostile about outside educational partners with. Maybe consider not populating the committee with your business manager, a retired rep, union rep teacher you solicited, and the husband of a recent board member. Like, like, all of a sudden I learned, oh, that's Alisa's husband. Interesting. You might conclude that more rather than fewer members would be expeditious, have alternatives in the mix. That's what other districts do. They either build to eleven, sometimes they even have more, so that you can always make sure that you have seven. It actually expedites the process. It doesn't slow it down. If you cared as much about transparency as you do about controlling information, you would provide a list of the names that were submitted. What are their qualifications? What slot were they submitting their names for? Give us date and timestamps when they came in. And be clear about which candidates required solicitation and by whom. You could have used the Deer Park Working Group, others, to help generate missing categories. We all know teachers. We could be out there looking for teachers to help you. How would the board know the qualifications of the unknown candidates? What questions did you ask about who did you, who did you vet off? Bill has a career and fire expertise. Can you imagine a better source of information for your Deer Park Working Group than somebody would work to know about how this property is going to be safe for the neighborhood? It's very curious. You did none of these things, under the watchful eye of a highly compensated attorney. How much more do you need to manipulate and tightly control the outcome of what is explicitly mandated to be public input? The clock is ticking on August eviction. You want to blame this and, and tell us we're harming the center by this? I don't know. Maybe this is accidental, maybe not.
She needs to give her name to the record.
That was Lisa Kanan. Just go ahead and state your name. That was Lisa Kanan.
My name is Sharon Sager. One thing I wanted to say was, how could the board have deliberated on a team of people to be on a seven-eleven committee when they don't even see the whole list of applicants? How, how can you determine that you've made a good decision if you don't have all the information? I, I've never seen a process in any public board meeting where they selected candidates for something and actually didn't see the list of all the people who applied. So if you didn't see the list of all the people who applied, how can you do a good job of selecting people? So that's one, one of my comments. The second one is that in a, a public process that has created so much community interest like this, as trustees, you should hope to put a selection of people on that committee who the community can have trust that you're getting a broad viewpoint about what's happening and, and good community discussion. You don't build it as people who you can trust to only do, do it quick, or, you know, or we can get these five people together in an expeditious way. I showed up for every meeting for months. Why would you assume that I couldn't make any meeting that was scheduled? So the kind of discussion to say we made it, you know, easier for us to get the people together, that's an assumption that you're making that probably isn't true. But your community would have a whole lot more confidence in the process if you actually put some of the people on that committee who you consider to be your, your problem people, because the community would have a little more faith in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name, and if you want English translation, we can do the extra timer.
Steve, where are they?
Spanish.
Mi nombre es Jolanda Baraguna.
My name is Jolanda.
Vivo aquí en Fairfax.
I live here in Fairfax.
Trabajo con la comunidad, con familias.
I work with the community and families.
He venido a todas las reuniones.
I've been to twelve meetings.
Eh, estoy aquí otra vez como mamá.
I'm here again.
Y como abuela ahora.
My grandma.
Eh, justo como trabajo con familias, acabo de llegar de una reunión.
And since I work with family.
En que hablamos sobre el tema de la diversidad y la identidad cultural, y de lo importante que es mantenerla, reforzarla,
And it's really important to reinforce.
Y tomar de las otras culturas también.
And take action.
Tengo una sugerencia porque como, la verdad que la traducción es bastante difícil, por lo que hemos visto, quizás pueden ustedes también proveernos, por lo menos con la pantalla en español y con algún documento en español, porque el centro sirve familias que en su mayoría somos de origen hispano. Y para nosotros adultos es bastante difícil aprender el inglés. Eh, y si el lenguaje es bastante complicado ya de por sí, y ahora como, ya para, no, no entendemos bien qué está pasando. Yo siento en cada reunión cambia, cambian las cosas. Quiero entender si es porque no hemos tenido la traducción adecuada o es porque algo, algo está pasando, o sea, no es posible que esté cambiando tanto esto. Eh, otra cosa que yo quiero decir es que, eh, quiero que el centro se mantenga,
I want the center to maintain.
No solo por mi nieto.
Not only because of her.
Él sabe que vivimos aquí ahora otra vez, y me dice, abuela, ¿por qué quieren cerrarlo? ¿Dónde vamos a ir? Mi papá tiene que trabajar, y tú tienes que trabajar. ¿Qué vamos a hacer nosotros? Yo sé que ustedes quizá ya han tomado su decisión y hacen las cosas. Ustedes pueden hacer un traspaso al centro. El centro no ha sido, no ha podido tener los fondos que necesita por muchas cosas aparte, porque ustedes no han dado un contrato de renta para que puedan accesar a otros fondos. Y entonces es, es como, no se entiende. Quieren que hagan, pero no. Procuran para que hagan. Eso es. En mi país se dice dónde morar. No sé cómo se dice. Entonces, quiero, yo pido, y casi que a esta hora exijo, que hagan un traspaso. Nosotros tenemos derechos, porque somos seres humanos. Colaboramos aquí, y no pueden quitarnos eso. ¿Qué vamos a hacer para trabajar? Todo está caro. Tenemos a veces hasta dos trabajos. Esa es una realidad que yo sé que ustedes quizás no conocen, ni, ni se la imaginan. Como, como nosotros sufrimos para poder poner comida en nuestra mesa, pagar la renta, recibo de cuatrocientos dólares de PGNI. ¿Qué es esto? Y ustedes no quieren quitar la posibilidad de nosotros poder trabajar, porque están quitando el cuidado de nuestros niños y de nuestras niñas. Mirémonos. Todos somos seres humanos. Por favor, dejen un vivir, colaborar, coexistir, como estábamos explicando hoy a las familias latinas. Me siento frustrada, me siento triste, y también me siento molesta. Estoy... No, no puedo entender como un comité director de educación quiere cerrar un, un lugar tan importante para muchas familias. No, no entiendo. Me cuesta entender eso. Y que, y que, y que mi, mi nieto a la edad de seis años esté preocupándose si se va a tener que ir a otro lugar, ¿de qué lugar? Él, eh, es, no, no es justo que ustedes estén decidiendo algo que está en sus manos poder hacerlo. Es difícil, pero está en sus manos, porque ustedes son el comité de educación. Eh, nada, más eso. Estoy, me siento frustrada.
And I'm very frustrated.
Y en lugar de abrir, reforzar, procurar otros centros educativos como este, lo están cerrando. No. Yo no puedo entender eso. Queremos diversidad, pero cuando tenemos que hacer algo para proteger y conservar esa diversidad, no lo hacemos.
We don't do it.
Es... Inaudito, se dice la palabra también. Eh, la verdad que estoy aquí todas las reuniones, y hasta ahorita entiendo muy poco de lo que está pasando aquí. Lo único que yo entiendo es que van a cerrar ese lugar. No nos quieren dar un traspaso cuando está en sus manos poder hacerlo, y nos vamos a quedar estando aquí para que cuiden de la comunidad.
Thank you.
So, before I speak, I'd like to acknowledge these people who have neglected.
Can I, can, I'm, I'm actually...
No, no, no.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just a minute, just, excuse me, this is public comment directed.
Just address us.
This is, this is public comment directed at the board, so just give us your name.
My name is John. It's remarkably frustrating.
Get three minutes.
Thank you. It's remarkably frustrating that I have been castized for keeping time with respect to the public comment. So I'm going to set that aside. My only comment tonight with respect to the board is that I respect all of you for all the things that you have done. And that is the only thing that I wanted to say to you over the years. And the amount of time and disrespect that you people need to face in these meetings, it's legion, and it mystifies me that you all can keep coming up here day after day after day and dealing with it. And the amount of disrespect I faced even trying to get up here to say this is mystifying. And here they are, again, looking at me and doing this. I'm willing to take the thongs and sl- the slings and throws of public arrows for you.
Just keep, just...
That's okay. Don't worry about it. It just shows the idiocy of these people that keep coming after you guys. And when...
This is civil discourse. This is democracy in action, Shelley.
These people, these people?
Just, just write a...
All I want to say is thank you to all of you. And whoever, those people, is that a better description of people behind you? I just want to say thank you for what you guys have done.
Thank you.
So, Shelley?
Yes.
When it's translation generally, I, I do talk twice the amount of time, so we have time for the translation.
If it's Spanish and translating into English for us, then you do twice the amount of time.
Okay.
Right. Your name, just name and hold on a moment, thank you.
My name is Florencia Parada. Wanted to just say, first, apologize. Again, it's, it's not his fault, the translator, and he's not seventeen. I want to be responsible with what I'm saying. He's nineteen. At the same time, this is a very serious job. This is really serious. When you're talking is serious. It's not a job for us. It's our lives, our children's life, it's our education, it's equity. And this is not equity. When we're hiring, not their, not their mistake, but when we're not putting seriousness with the communication you're trying to share to us, especially with our monolingual families. It's not a crime to be a minor linguist. It's not a crime. And this is something that is important for you having your district people who don't speak the language. And as a respect, it's our right for you to also, it's the right for you to share the information and the language of the families you represent, do you like it or not. Another thing I want to say, it's really making us sick coming here every month to talk with all of you. It's really sick, especially when some of you are falling asleep when we're talking. And I understand you all tired, and, and it is true, some people are falling asleep. But at the same time, this is also our time. You are volunteer. We are so too, because I, believe me, we're not working here this time. And we're trying to share with you the value of early childhood education that you're not putting a value, also with the transparency that you, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going to speak slowly. I know.
It's okay.
But it's really important to recognize our own biases. Mr. Ryan O'Neil, in September, you told us you can explain this to us, but you cannot understand this to us. How do you think that sounds like? You sound, unfortunately, and with all my respect, because this is not personal against you, I don't know you, you sound racist when you talk about that. And I believe you say you're not. I believe you, because we don't know our, our biases. We're not really aware or self-reflect that our words and how they, how you share, it sounds like you're bullying us, it's you're targeting us, you're really discriminating us. That's how it sounds. I don't believe, I believe everyone is good people, and this world really, we're trying to do good. I do believe that, but at the same time, we have to be responsible in the way we act, because your actions for us represent oppression. You like it or not, is that how it feels? It feels like that, when your body language really feels like trying to intimidate us, threaten us, and bully us. That's how it looks like. And that run or write is not about being run or write here. It's about how you, when you talk and we share information that is not even transparent or clear or accurate sometimes, how that sounds, it sounds in this way when you're also not putting respect and, and our interpretation sounds like you don't really care, even if you're talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. If it brings money to your table, then we will talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. But if it doesn't mean, it doesn't bring money to your table, then we're nobody. We need to get out of this Rose Valley School District because it's not in our backyard. We cannot have immigrant community here in the backyard, right? So I really, truly, I do know you from work, from equity, inclusion, and opportunity, and I'm in shock that you're leading a team that is not reflecting on your own actions. I'm in shock you're also part of this, and I'm in shock that we also keep after many, many months since June, asking for respect, at least with interpretation, at least with that. And you, every month, trying and bringing people who is not their fault again, but cannot do that. You guide to hire people who are certified to do that. That's one thing. The other, you can transfer the property. You can actually transfer the property if you want.
Thank you.
If it's our community, you will do that.
Thank you.
But if it's our community, you're not doing it. Please.
Thank you, Florencia.
Reflect on your actions and your words. Please do that.
Thank you. All right. Let's go ahead and bring this back to the board.
Back here.
Our conversation, for any further discussion or action, is around Bill Madison's demand for curing and correcting the action that we took on November ninth. So, you know, if there's any other conversation around our behavior with respect to the Brown Act, and which is the basis of that demand.
Yeah.
That's the focus of what we need to focus on with our decision. I do make an assumption that we all, as you mentioned, do our homework. So, you know, our decision was based on the information that was provided to us before the meeting. I know I read through all of it, so I was very aware of the decision that I was making that night, and who was on the committee, and what we were authorizing. So if anyone else has any questions about that, we can discuss that, or if there's any other discussion items.
I, I also saw the board docs with the list of the, the people we were voting on. I had asked privacy questions beforehand and had them answered. So I didn't have questions at the meeting before. I don't have questions now either.
There, there are seven categories of people who need to be on the seven-eleven committee. All seven, the criteria were met. The slate of candidates that were brought before us was not only acceptable, but it exceeded what my... The slate of candidates that were brought before us was not only acceptable, but it exceeded what my expectations. This notion that this board is gonna sit and go through every application shows a fundamental misunderstanding of what a board does. Fundamental misunderstanding. There, there was absolutely nothing that was done at that meeting that was incorrect. We are redoing the vote tonight because there's been a citizen complaint. We would have been well within our right not to do that. Um, so I have absolutely zero concerns with the Seven Eleven Committee that's been configured, nor do I have any concerns about the number of members on the committee.
And just, just clarifying the action that we're taking tonight. Um, we are, um, we're taking an action to confirm that our action on the ninth was done, to approve the resolution was done in accordance with the Brown Act and therefore the resolution stands. So, we're not actually revoting, but I just want to, yeah, just clarify. We're, we're reaffirming and confirming our action and that it was done in accordance with the Brown Act, so.
It's been a complete waste of time, but we've gone ahead and done it anyhow.
Citizens' democracy at work, right? Waste of time, right?
Okay. Any other?
No?
Nice bridge.
Alright, so, we're gonna have our, finish our discussion and I can pause and put a pause on this and we can wait to do that. But I'd like to be able to continue.
We tried to translate because he's not translating, so we tried to translate here.
So, I'm personally okay with, with going ahead and taking this action tonight. I think what we can do is, um...
I, I am, I am glad that we did this, even though, you know, it may feel like a waste of time this time. I, I do feel it was valuable because I did get to hear what people had to say about it and I was kinda surprised we didn't hear comments before. And so I am glad that everyone was able to speak tonight about it with the information at hand.
So, anyone, is everyone clear on what our action is tonight or you want me to reiterate what that is? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. So, that motion then is, or the, the motion would be to vote to confirm that the action that the board took on November ninth to approve Resolution zero, zero, two, 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 three was done in accordance with the Brown Act and therefore the resolution stands as adopted on November ninth.
And that second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Aye, Marie.
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Alright. Um, so that motion was approved and adopted, we're taking action. The next item that we have for presentation and action item is just a discussion and information-only action item and it's an update on the, on Deer Park and where we are with that. So, again, no action. We'll do, there's, there's no action to be taken on this one, it's just an update. So, we'll go ahead and do a presentation on that update and then about the comment, bring it back. Alrighty, so tonight's Deer Park update.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you, Bryce. Um, include, uh, this Seven Eleven Committee status. Hold on, hold on a second. I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that our translator can hear us up here and I was having a hard time. Alright, so tonight's Deer Park update topics include a Seven Eleven Committee status, a Deer Park property evaluation considerations, and Fairfax Center and Selmo Children's Center's facilities needs assessment. Uh, we don't, those will be the three topics for this evening on the site. Uh, just to give an update, uh, with the board having confirmed the action that you took, um, on November ninth, staff will be able to, um, get back in touch with the seven committee members and find dates for the new year. Um, as just a reminder, uh, the Seven Eleven Committee is a Brown Act compliant committee. They will, um, meet, have agendas, the agendas will be posted to Board Docs. And the meetings will occur here at the district office, the public may attend, they may give public comment. And we've also added a page on our district website under the trustees section, um, called Seven Eleven Committee. So, that's where there will be information housed there and a link to, uh, Board Docs from there. Um, in terms of the, well, let me just ask, are there any questions on that item? Alright, so then related to the Deer Park property evaluation considerations, the written appraisal was received today. That has been, was uploaded, uh, this morning to Board Docs and then also sent to you following that. And, um, the appraisal was based on all of the known factors that we have already discussed, like the age, condition of the buildings, zoning limitations, neighborhood traffic capacity, fire safety issues, et cetera. And also takes into account a variety of valuation methods, like cap rate, comparables, et cetera. Um, the estimate, as it's come in, um, we anticipated, uh, early on was gonna be between two point five to two point eight million with a high of three point five. And now that we've received the written final report, um, we note that the amount is three million. And we do believe after reviewing, uh, the final report that our appraiser was very thorough and fair. And I think Shelley, did you wanna add anything on that part?
No, I just, I, the only thing I wanted to clarify was that there are, our initial verbal estimate was the appraiser's verbal estimate.
Yes.
It wasn't our C S, thank you. So, that our, our, our appraiser did give us, our appraiser did give us a verbal estimate?
Mm-hmm.
And we shared that verbal in our Deer Park Working Group just as a verbal estimate, knowing that the final appraisal was gonna come in, so that's what that came from.
Thank you for clarifying. Um, and I also today did forward the appraisal to our Deer Park Working Group Committee, so they have that as well.
Then the only other update, the, the other part of that valuation consideration update in terms of our conversations, is that we had, we have been, in addition to the appraisal which we were waiting for, is that we have also been in our Deer Park Working Group conversations in discussions around other types of, um, uh, discounts off of that appraisal and what that would look like. And, uh, in terms of the, uh, there've been some back and forth ongoing conversations about what that might look like, um, requests from the Children's Center on that regard. And, um, and one of those considerations had to do with what the cross-enrollment between our district and the Children's Center is, so we are still working through some of those issues um, in terms of getting the information that we need. And knowing that as a board, whatever decision we finally make in our negotiation process, that we are gonna need to, um, and we've talked about this in our, our working groups, that we are gonna need to substantiate those decisions and have a factual basis and some findings for those decisions, uh, for our pricing decision. So, the appraisal is one piece of that, um, fact-finding substantiation for the decision that we make. Um, but we've been clear that we also need to, any other kind of conversations that we have about valuation and so price are gonna have to be substantiated. So, we have been having conversations around enrollment numbers and what that would look like in terms of, we have recognized here and we continue to have conversations around the value that the Children's Center brings to our community and specifically to our schools. We've had agreement, um, in some of our back and forths around that value, um, in terms of kindergarten readiness, so that children, we all know that children who go to preschool are ready to go to kindergarten.
Yep.
And that children have support after school, um, have a better time, an easier time in school and help with that. So, those services are very much appreciated by the Children's Center. Um, and those are part of the conversations that we're having with respect to next steps, now that we have the kind of full market value of the appraisal, what that would look like. But we've also had some challenging conversations around how to, how to move that conversation forward and what are the facts and the basis for those further conversations. So, we'll bring that back to you and we have more specific information on that. But we do need to have the tangible, uh, facts and numbers for that.
And then, so any questions on that clarification on that? Alrighty, and then the last topic for this evening is, um, the Fairfax Center and Selmo Children's Center has been working on a facility needs assessment and, um, Michael, their counsel has let Terry Chow, our counsel, know that, um, it should be completed shortly. So, our next Deer Park Working Group meeting is January third, right after the winter break. And so, um, hopefully by then, we will, they will be able to, maybe with the holidays though, however, it may not be able to be received, but shortly thereafter. Um, so we can have, continue our conversation, um, around the appraisal now that we have the final report on that as well as the next steps, um, that are in our process as we move forward.
Does that needs assessment, um, seem to be ready for the January third or is that just a target date?
Um, it's not, I mean, we, it's, um, as reported, it was, um, almost completed. So, whether that means it'll be ready, I didn't get a timeline, I was just noting, um, when the next meeting is that we have for the Deer Park Working Group.
It'd be great to have that by that meeting, it would be really, that'd be great, that's ready.
And, and just so you know, what we, we have a, like a checklist of next step action items. Then we review that at all of our, at our working group meetings, is that checklist of action items? And so we know what's been completed and what's still up. And then we'll be refining that checklist now that we're kind of moving it, now that we've got the appraisal, we'll hopefully have the facility needs assessment information, so we'll probably be adding to that and kind of moving into the next phase with respect to that. We may have some Seven Eleven Committee, uh, you know, fleshing out that Seven Eleven Committee timeline and any other kind of, um, negotiation bits and pieces. So, we'll be adding to that, probably next time in January, we'll come with a presentation that has that checklist.
Yep.
And has maybe more of those, that details, um, information, especially since we just got the appraisal, the appraisal tonight, or yes, this morning. Um, so we're getting information, but we should have all that and be able to do some more, you know, presentation like we did maybe last time.
Can I ask how that process is moving along with your checklist? Is it actually, are we pushing things off or is the checklist coming in as expected?
Well, I mean, as our last agenda item noted, we had a delay.
That was my point, about, I'm not talking about the democratic process and whether people have the right to attend meetings. I'm talking about the fact that the Seven Eleven process has been slowed down. That I'm, that I am eager to, to move that forward, that's the waste of time.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that is.
Is there anything else that's been delayed along with the checklist other than, than that?
Doesn't seem to be, no, so far.
And if those are starting to be delayed, um, those will come out at the future meetings, so we can follow in real time kind of what's going on, what's not going on?
We'll go back to the, we'll go back to the timeline, what was the last meeting where we had the whole presentation with the timeline and everything?
September twenty-first, I think that was the meeting.
Yeah, I think it's, it will be a good one. So, so we'll come, so, so we'll come back, okay. Let's, I think we're moving beyond clarifications, but if there's anything else that comes up like that for next steps on that, it's helpful for us to know because we then can go to the in-between and, and work on what we need to work on ourselves. We'll take note of that. Alright, um, and if there's any, like, clarifications, we can do that, otherwise I'm gonna go out. Alright. Uh, just making note here of timeline. Alright, so let's go out to public comment on this update. There's any public comment on the update item?
Seven Eleven Committee could have been, could have been two years ago, honestly. So, let's not talk about whose delay is whose delay. You built this building without one, you did, uh, public, you, you met privately for two years without one. The property's been surplus for a really long time, don't blame the delay on people's concern about your process. The Deer Park valuation brief that you presented with the board back in reiterates your sole preoccupation with the demand that the center provide confidential verifiable data regarding the last five years, a specificity that violates family privacy that you have been told repeatedly is privileged and confidential, yet you continue to insist on it as a sole critical metric for your good faith negotiations for below-market value of transfer. Curious timeframe and a metric on which to base an assessment of the value of a center rather than one that takes into account contributions the center has made to families, the community, and this district for almost forty years, instead five years, interesting timeframe. Here's the history again for our incoming board member and for people who will listen to this later. Again, because it seems you're not getting it, if what you've provided to your Berkeley commercial property real, property assessors is a reflection. In nineteen fifty, the Fairfax School District obtained this land in a contentious dispute with MMWD that ended in a court condemnation, transferring the property for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. The inflationary value of that in today's dollars is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. There was noted opposition by the TAM Conservation Club and other conservation groups. The school building was constructed in nineteen fifty-two, but when the districts merged Fairfax and San Antonio in nineteen eighty-four, the Deer Park School was closed. There was a, was declared surplus through a Seven Eleven Committee, never to be reopened as a district property, except as a rental property, which has received very little by way of upkeep or investment. RVSD as an entity never had, never operated a school district on that property. They inherited the property that had been court ordered for educational purposes to a former district. The only entity that has fulfilled the educational purposes intended for that property is the center and it has almost had complete responsibility for upkeep, including defensible space and building repairs. But you seem to believe that you should be the beneficiary of some imaginary real estate investment holding on public lands that you have not used. For almost forty years, this center and its families matriculated into our schools, RVSD schools, supporting the district budget through ADA, the most stripped-down and grotesque way to characterize the contribution of these families and this center. Not even beginning to address the community value of high-quality early childhood education and its critical resources to families who depend on childcare in order to work in our communities. But now, for very curious reasons, RVSD is hell-bent on a highly specific and arbitrary metric designed only by you that demands confidential student information. You have had data on many of these students for over thirty years, many of whom have been transported between district schools and the center. But now you want us to believe that there's some kind of preordained magic value metric to justify some small decrease from a three million dollar valuation that demands residency and matriculation for the past five years. It's very curious.
Sharon Sager, um, I agree with Lisa that the value of this property to the community is not limited to the students who attend Ross Valley Schools today. Um, if you ask people around the community, the value is that we have a low-cost childcare center that's available, that makes it possible for members of our community to work and live in our community as well as school, of these students getting a really good educational start. Um, so the values of the center to our, our community are much greater than that which you're limiting in your board report tonight. So, please keep that in mind because if somehow you came to the conclusion that there aren't enough kids in that center going to your schools and you use that as some justification to not sell this property to the center, the community would not be agreeing with that. The community sees a much greater value than just that limited view. Um, also, keep in mind that when you're talking about the value of this property, yes, you have an appraisal. Um, but if you really do retain rights to the property for some future use as a school somewhere down the road, you're not losing that value because you're always retaining that as a community asset for us sometime in the future. So, really, if you think about it that way, you're really talking about a building that's about seventy years old that you know you would completely rebuild if you were gonna open that property when the time came because you know you're not opening it tomorrow. You're probably not even opening it twenty years from now, but at some point, if you did decide you needed that site for school again, you would probably build it from the ground up. So, to really assign a value to that property of three million dollars just seems completely unrealistic if you're writing it so you retain the rights to that property someday and you're getting rid of a building that you would rebuild at some point in the future. So, remember that there is a greater value to this community for that program to remain there than just the kids who attend school today.
Thank you. Okay. This was, uh, the information and discussion, so if there's any, there's no action items tonight. So, if there are any other, any other discussion items, I did take note. So if there are any other, any other discussion items, I did take note of the timeline questions and the idea of bringing that back at the next meeting as part of the presentation. Is there any other, any other discussion or things that you want to provide to us before we move on? Okay. All right. As always, if something comes to mind, you can email Marcy in between if there's something that you think we should include in our ongoing conversations, just so we can take that into consideration. All right. We then are going to move on to, tonight we've got a little bit of a part one, part two for presentation and action items. So right now we're just going to move on to board business and that's the conclusion of the presentation and action items with respect to the Deer Park property. So on to board business, which is committee updates and reports from the trustees. I'm actually seeing a lot of people who are getting up and leaving, so I'm just going to take a one minute break while people leave so that we can continue to hear. If anybody wants to turn in the listening devices, we can just put them in the, turn them in with the action. Okay, we'll go ahead with our board business. A second. Thanks, Sebastian. And Sebastian, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. We really do appreciate it. We are going to do committee updates and then we've got some meeting minutes to approve. So committee updates for those of us who have attended any committee meetings. And I'm not going to go to you, Rachel, first because I know you always have a lot. Anyone else? I went to J-LAC this morning.
I was going to say, I did a good job in not showing up to J-LAC this morning and sending it to you, so hopefully you can update us on it. I, I looked at the presentation, but I just couldn't, I couldn't make it.
I will update on J-LAC shortly. I'm not sure, there was no J-PAs, Wesley?
No, there were no J-Pas.
What committees, your J-Pa and?
Policy and procedures.
Oh, C and J-Pa, okay. And Ryan?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. You want to arm myself for?
You go ahead. It might be faster.
The one woman show.
You go ahead. Because J-LAC will be fast.
Okay, so I attended the YES meeting back in November. They skipped the one for December because it was hard with everybody's schedules. So I've kind of got a mishmash of emailed updates from Chelsea, the executive director versus, in what I remember from November that I wrote down. So fundraising updates, they are doing their last push for their, their fall fundraiser. They're trying to get a $50,000 matching gift. They're pretty close. They're like, I think $19,000 away was last I heard. And that they're trying to get to halfway of the goal of a million dollars for this entire school year. The Schools Rule gave us their donation, which is always the largest donor that YES receives from. But this year it was a little bit lower than in the past because they've done a separate, they've done a separate formula and they're funding a second, second fund right now. And so what they received for Schools Rules is slightly lower than normal, but it's still the largest single donor that we have for YES. So thank you to Schools Rules. It's a conglomerate of like a nonprofit fundraising for all of the schools to kind of provide equity and funding at all the school districts. So, let's see, Mar, so you'll, lately, all of our families have gotten fundraising emails from Marcy, from the principals this week. There's a final email going out next, or tomorrow, and then there's another one going out Friday. There have been posts on Instagram every day this week, kind of pushing it. So I'm sure people have seen it. They had the White Hill Play two weeks ago, which is a big success. Both cast did a great job. It was really, really fun to watch and it was a really unique production. Amy's Drive-Thru did a fundraiser for us over the weekend and I heard that it went really well. I heard it was really crowded. I, I don't know what the numbers look like for that yet, but I guess there's a family in our district that's involved with Amy's Drive-Thru, so they, they were willing to help us out and fundraise. So thank you to them. The elementary school holiday sing-alongs have been going on the last two weeks and those have been really, really well attended and very well received. They, everybody I've talked to said that they've had a really good time. There are two performances at White Hill this week. Yesterday was the first one, the band concert I went to, and then there's one tomorrow night for the orchestra. And then, let's see, for D-LAC, that was the meeting on December 7th. It was, it was kind of, it was a unique meeting, it was really kind of fun. The Marin Adult Education Consortium gave a presentation to us and they are affiliated with TAM Union High School District. And so they actually said that we were the first district that had ever reached out to them to have a presentation given. And so they, they told us a lot about their, their programs for adult education, which is really interesting things that they offer. They do morning and evening ESL and GED classes. They have curriculum for GED prep and for Kaplan. They do reading and math assessments. They have technology workshops. They do student support services. They have college counselor available. They have special programs for people who are interested in becoming a home health care aide, for job fairs, opportunities. There's all sorts of things that they kind of offer. Their website is pretty easy. I think they're retooling it, so it's, it's not fantastic right now, but it's, it does have a lot of information. And it's, you just go to TAM Union High School District and you can look under like resources and find, you know, adult education. Let's see, they've got, and they've got, because it's TAM Union, they've got school, various schools all over the, our area that they work in. So you know, there's some in Mill Valley, there's some at Cora Madera, there's some at Archie. So there's just various locations that might help our community members participate more. And so they just gave us a lot of information on the programs that they are offering right now, which is really informative and kind of helpful. So that was it. I don't know, I'm sure Eric will have extra to add to that, but that's just a quick snapshot of what happened.
Thank you. I attended the superintendent's council and then roundtable right after it, but I won't do that if, were you going to do that on any?
You can't, go ahead.
No, you absolutely can. I'm just going to do a short part. You can, I just want to take too much time in this part, so we can do more later. It was a really good meeting, that whole, both of those meetings are coming together of a lot of different parent groups. So the parent, teacher organizations, PTAs, PTOs, parent organizations on campuses, site councils, the parent guardian equity, task force groups, D-LACs, all those groups come together in both of those. And the focus is really on sharing information, getting feedback, and especially in the roundtable, which is meant to be, it has made of, again, continuing down that path of making the shift from equal, from equal to equitable and really having some conversations around the ways that the different schools both do fundraising and then allocate funds in different ways and aligned with our, our Rachel Equity Mission Statement. So that's, it's, being in those meetings, I am often reminded about how that work is being lived in different ways around our district. And we can get into more details later, but that was the highlight for me on that. I also attended J-LAC, which is the Joint Legislative Action Committee this morning at like, wasn't it 7:30? The other one was at 7:30, 8:30? And that update was really just around an update from the elections and it went through who all of the legislative shifts are and who is fairly wonky in terms of like, who's the head of the education committee and what the breakdown is on who was elected. So it was, that was mostly on that. And then the E2, which is the Efficiency and Effectiveness Committee, is focused on, continuing to focus on shared services across districts. Interestingly enough, the topic that relates to what you were just talking about was the idea of shared services that also build matriculation alignment with the high school districts. And so there was a little bit of conversation around math curriculums in the junior highs and whether or not, and this wasn't related to our district, but one of the other districts, I forget which one it was, was looking at how their junior highs matriculate and let the, whether the junior highs are coordinating their math curriculum with the high school districts in terms of that matriculation and how to make that a smooth process for kids, which I thought was a great point of conversation. So that's, that's those committee updates that I have. And thank you for going this morning.
You're welcome.
And we'll talk about the reorganization, that's another agenda item later, but yeah, it's nice to have backup. It's nice to have an alternate, shall we say, if we do that. Unless there's anything else, we'll go on to the other business. Nope. All right, so we've got two board meetings to approve minutes for. We've got the November 9th minutes, which we are now approving. And good that we had taken that other action about November 9th before this, so are there any other edits, copy edits, errors that anyone saw?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 9 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Shelley?
I'm staying.
Thank you. And Rachel?
Aye.
So Teresa, did you get the abstention?
I did.
Great. All right, then we've got the December 2nd minutes. Any questions, updates, edits on that? I'm looking over at you. You're very good at being detail oriented as well for all of us, which I appreciate very much. Takes all of us looking at it.
This was, was short, so yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting of December 2nd.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Wesley?
I'm staying. I missed that party.
That's right. All right. We are back on round two, part two of our presentation and action items. So we have two items here that pertain to the transition of our trustee slate up here. And the first one is respect to the Board of Trustees, the terms of office, the taking oath of office and the swearing in ceremony and recognition, and then a recognition and reception of our outgoing trustee Wesley, who will be leaving us tonight as his final board meeting, once we have the swearing in of our new board member. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Marcy, to guide us.
Sure, thank you so much. And really happy this evening that Wesley will be doing in the swearing in for our reelected trustee, Ryan O'Neal, and our new trustee, newly elected trustee, trustee elect, Chris Landals-Cobb. And so thank you so much, Wesley, for doing that with us this evening. And let me, can you take it?
Yep. All right. So I'm just going to echo how appreciative Wesley we have been and I really appreciate that I, I like this transition of you doing the swearing in for the handing the baton as, as it were, and I, again, am reminded that this peaceful transition of power, this is the way it's supposed to work, right? Where somebody gets elected and not only does that, but the?
Well, it hasn't happened yet.
Well, okay. It's about to happen. Wait out. Yes. The one who's ready, you were there. All right, so.
Where do you want us to stand?
Well, let's do, if you don't mind, let's kind of in the center here.
Okay, who's first?
We'll do, let's do Chris. Let's do alphabetical.
Ah, please, she's first.
Do this at the same time?
And, yeah, the same time. All right.
Have your own moment.
Now you have to do one by one.
You have to have your own.
You have to, you, you, you have to do one by one.
I could have done it today.
You've actually taken this oath before, counselor.
I have, for my job.
Okay. I, Chris Landals-Cobb.
I, Chris Landals-Cobb.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of California?
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter?
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Have a seat.
Okay, let's just move yours.
Here we go. Have a seat. Come over here. Here we go, the replacing of the ceremonial. Wesley, I'm going to hold up for you.
Hi, Ryan O'Neal. Hi, Ryan O'Neal.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of California?
And the Constitution for the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion?
Without any, any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge?
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter?
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right, well now let's get into the seats and we do have a recognition ceremony. We would like to take time to honor and thank so much Wesley Pratt for serving and we have a little something, so before you go, you've got to stay a little bit longer. You're not seated up here, but you've got to stay.
You've got to stay and listen to us, talk to you now.
And then also, the, the recognition ceremony is to also welcome Chris Landals-Cobb for what could turn out to be more than just one term because you're going to be on this board for a long time.
Lucky you.
Yeah, lucky you, lucky us. And also for Ryan O'Neal, who is continuing on as a member of the Board of Trustees and you also, this wasn't your first time taking that oath. And so here you go again, and for many more years that you may be serving on this school board as well. So first we'd like to, something of a tradition in the Ross Valley Schools is when someone retires, and in this case we're considering Wesley as a retiree of the Ross Valley School District as an outgoing trustee. We do something which is what we know, many of you may know, is a Wordle. Do you know what a Wordle is? It's not the game you play on a daily basis on New York Times, okay? It's not that. And Wesley, you get to keep this.
Okay.
All right. This is one. And to create the Wordle, we gather adjectives and descriptors of the retiree. And Sean Mahler, our Director of Information Technology, creates a beautiful Wordle. And so it reflects our district's logo and as well, and then all the descriptors are placed as a ray of sunshine around our district logo because Wesley, you are a ray of sunshine for our school district. You have been. And so we also note how long the person has served. So Wesley in the Ross Valley School District, as you may have seen on the board agenda, he first served from December 13th through December 18th. And you're wondering like, wait, that's five years. How did he get to do five years on that first term? Well, it just had to do with the law changing about the serving of the trustees and the way that the board adopted the implementation of that law. He got to serve one extra year in that term. And then his second term has been 2018 to '22. But that's not when Wesley's work in the Ross Valley School District started. So with Henry, who is now, what rating is he in, Henry?
Senior.
You're a senior this year and you started in the Ross Valley School District with the 2010 school year as a kindergarten. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
2010? Yeah. All right. So with Henry, as a parent and a community member of our Ross Valley Schools is when Wesley first started becoming involved and paying attention to the schools. Now, when Wesley became a trustee, he no longer just was paying attention to the Brookside Community, which is where his children's school of residence is, but, and where he was a member of our community. But Wesley has been a champion for every child. But Wesley has been a champion for every child in every attendance area of this school district, every child who attends all of the schools. And we also, in our school district, have an early childhood special ed program. And that is also something that Wesley is a champion for, the children, all of our children, serving in the Ross Valley Schools. And with all of the years that Wesley has served with us, and all of our children, and our staff, and our families, and our San Antonio and Fairfax communities, he has made immense decisions and great impact on the education that all of your children, all of you who are in the audience, and for those of you who are at home, and for my own children. A great impact on the legacy that Ross Valley Schools will be, and the great education that we provide our children. And Wesley, you, some of the words to use to describe you are committed, perceptive, efficient, exemplary, thoughtful, caring, dignity, insightful, dependable, funny, because you are. witty, responsible, quiet leader, we try to go with just one word, but sometimes you can't. Child-centered, wise, compassionate, efficient, trustworthy. Might start to repeat some. But anyway, those are some of the words that were used to describe Wesley, and while he's been on the Board of Trustees, he has served on a variety of committees, he's been our stalwart representative for board policy updates. And board policies are really critical and important to a school district. They help guide us how we go through our daily operations, as well as what we stand for in our school district, and as the laws, the local governance of our school board, that board policies help us to follow. And so Wesley, with your vice counsel on throughout our board policy update procedures, thank you. You've been immensely helpful there. He has also served on the Joint Legislative Advisory Committee, which is also known as JALAC as its acronym. And he has also served, very importantly, on the Joint Executive Powers Agreement called the JIPA, and that's been around transportation. And so specifically on those committees, and very much representative of our school district on those committees, and doesn't just attend, but participates, very much so. And Wesley, I just have to say, as a new superintendent, I'm not, I'm not new now, but I was three years, this is my third year. And for you to be the role model, you were to me to help bring me on board to know how to serve the board and how to best serve this school district. I thank you and forever grateful for your guidance and your leadership and your stewardship in helping me to be able to be the superintendent of this school district.
Thank you. I'm not going anywhere.
You're gonna keep coming to board meetings?
That I think all.
We're gonna imagine you listening. All that, you know.
We'll come back again any time.
Alright, and then Wesley doesn't only have one child, he has another child, Stuart. And Stuart is an eighth grader this year. So just as Wesley is graduating and moving on, so will Stuart. And so we will miss your family here as part of our schools, and wife Carrie, huge volunteer in not only the schools that your children have attended, but also in the community. And so your family does great work to support the children and the families in our communities, so thank you. And this is a group effort, anytime a trustee serves, I'm gonna speak to the Landals Cobb. But it is really a family endeavor because of the huge amount of time and commitment that a trustee takes in order to make sure they're prepared, they get up to speed, and that they are doing the best work that they can for all of the children in our communities. And sometimes it may not be fun. But it is extremely rewarding, I will say. So thank you to Carrie, Stuart, and Henry for allowing your father, and your husband, and your best friend, and your partner to be with us for these past nine years as a trustee. We will certainly miss him, and I'm forever thankful and glad you're not going away.
I'm around.
So, also just, yeah, we have the reception, okay?
Oh, he's a receptionist.
The kids are all waiting for the treats.
So are we.
And so are we, so let's go into the reception, and then we can continue talking, because we want you to mix and mingle what Teresa and I have been doing at other receptions that we've had, we are going to start, so we will bring, have by. So everybody, come on and talk.
And here, I'm gonna call a short break. Alright, it's nine oh two, and we're gonna reconvene from our break reception for the recognition and reception of our outgoing trustee. Sad to see him go, but it was nice to give him a send-off, and for our re-elected and newly-elected, welcome, welcome. So let's now move on to the annual Board of Trustees Organization Meeting, which is to, we have two organization meetings, this is the official organization meeting, and then we'll talk about other committees at the next meeting, but this is the official organizational meeting to elect the board president, the clerk, and a representative to serve on the Marin County School Boards Association. So those are the three elections that we have for our organization. That is for, the term is December of two thousand and twenty-two, meaning tonight, through December of two thousand and twenty-three, a year from now. Marcy, will you do the introduction and lead us through this?
Yeah, thank you so much. And so one of the questions that I do have with this is with these elected positions, you are gonna be taking a vote, and so you're taking action on these, so what Shelley also made mention of were committee liaisons or representatives, those you just discussed and you come to agreement on who will serve, those you don't take action on, but tonight's items for president, clerk, as well as the representative to the Marin County School Boards Association, you do need to vote and take ballot. Now, the past, the first year, you all, we were via Zoom, so three years ago, so there was no written ballot. And then last year, you all agreed at this point in the meeting that you would prefer to do just auditory verbal, as opposed to having written ballots, but since that is an option, I'm gonna ask for you tonight to just state, do you wanna do a written ballot, Teresa has them prepared, if that's the way you wanna go? Or do you wanna just do it without a written ballot?
I'm good without ballot.
I don't mind doing it verbally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, great.
No preference.
No preference, alrighty. And so. Alrighty, so the first, and let me just say too, before we get any further. I'm also wanting to know if tonight, we want, we have to have a clerk that is part of a position that needs to happen on the board. But I'm wondering if we also wanna have an alternate clerk. So that way, like a couple of meetings Ryan was unable to attend, and so rather than having me, and I serve as your board secretary, so rather than having me sign on behalf of a clerk, that we had an alternate in the absence of the clerk, then the alternate would be able to sign. The president presides, as you've noticed, over the meetings, Shelley's role, she's been our president now for two years. And in her absence, the clerk would step in. And in the event that the, both the president and the clerk were absent, that way an alternate clerk would be able to step in, to be able to lead the meetings. So that would be a benefit of having an alternate clerk to that. And then also, as we had happened today, we might also wanna consider an alternate for Marin County School Boards Association, given that, like at today's meeting, you were unable to attend, Marie, due to work obligations, and so that might also be a representative. I do go to those, but if a trustee also, we could have an alternate on that as well. And so if we will do our first position, which is the board president, and at this time, I'm gonna ask, are there any nominations, and you can of course nominate yourself or nominate another trustee for the office of president of the Board of Trustees?
I nominate Shelley. For no other reason than I like to keep the irons in the fire that are current, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of important stuff. I couldn't fill the role. It'd be very difficult, I think, for any, for me, to step into that role regardless, just because there's so much going on. And I think you do a great job. And you have my support, although I would support anyone. I'm not saying I wouldn't, I'm just saying, I think for the best interest for this board, that we continue to have you as our board president, this is my own take.
Thank you. Appreciate that, I'd be happy to stay on and continue, I do think, and so.
And I second Ryan, and I want to commend you for all your moments of reflections that are indeed making us think and pause before we go to the speed and the craziness of certain time, you know, agenda and board activities. So I do appreciate that you actually keep us centered at the beginning, and that keep us together, and I appreciate that, that that your intent is real, and I feel it, and I always felt the energy each time you do it, so thank you for doing that, and I think this shows true leadership, and I want to see that happening. So, would like you to keep being the president. Thank you.
If you're willing to do it, I would be thrilled to have you do it again, I mean, I think you've got such a good handle on everything that's going on, and I think that, I agree, the continuity is important. But I like the leadership style and the thoughtfulness you put behind things, and the fact that you're very considerate, when, you know, there's something you need to speak about, or I need to speak to you about something.
Well. Thank you, and I appreciate that, and honestly, it's, it's, it is a lot of work, and it is a lot of extra time in terms of meeting and coordinating and that kind of stuff. And I am in a place where I can do that right now, which I so much appreciate, because I have been in a place in my life this would not have been possible, so. And also, honestly, a lot of it, just as I've mentioned to families here in the reception and whatever, is really able to feel comfortable, at least up here, being in this role because of who all of you are, and the respect that you have for each other, and the the way that we all work together as a board, so I, the easiest part is not managing weird dynamics on our, on our board, and I really appreciate, have appreciated that for two years, and especially stepping into it, not knowing what was gonna happen, and then it stayed that way, and then also with the staff, being able to be as amazing as they are, and coordinating, so. It makes it doable, appreciate, and I appreciate that, so, yeah. Impressed.
And I will say, I second what everyone else has said, I'm new, obviously, and I just wanna let you know that you have demonstrated a level of leadership and compassion that I think is needed with the issues that we're dealing with on the board. I think the continuity of leadership is needed at this point. I would support anyone in this role, but I think that having you continue, especially given that you have the capacity, it is absolutely, I think, the best decision.
Thanks.
So thank you, so Shelley, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Wonderful, alright.
Thank you.
And now, I will entertain a motion for appointment of the nominee to the board office of president for the next calendar year, for Shelley Hamilton.
So moved.
I second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's just do a roll call, so we have Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Shelley?
I'm staying.
Thankful against you, you're good enough.
We got you. And then do I now take, do the next one, or do you keep going?
We can do it either way, would you like to?
You can keep going.
Alright, okay.
Although, although I will add, I will put in my perspective on having a clerk and an alternate. I think it's worked out really well in other places where we've had alternates and be able to do that. So I do think it'd be good for us to have a clerk and an alternate, just to kind of have that backup for signing and for agenda planning and stepping in if I can't here, so. I don't know what you guys all think about that, we probably should talk about that before. Yeah.
And just maybe the role of the clerk is also participates in agenda planning, signs on behalf of the board, there are typically two signatures, sometimes it can be the board president and the secretary, which is me, and other times it is the board president and the clerk. So as we mentioned before, the clerk serves in that role, and also in the event that the president is unable to lead a meeting, then the clerk steps in for that, and participating in agenda planning is a great way, so in the event that the president can't be there, they have the background workings of the agenda and how it came to be. And so are you all okay with also having an alternate position on that?
Yes.
It'd be a good idea.
So, as far as agenda planning goes, just because Chris, she's new, like how long would that normally take, and how often would it be, just so she has a reference?
Agenda planning?
Yes.
Agenda planning is every, one week before our actual meetings.
It's the Tuesday before the agendas go live. So the Tuesday before the Friday, so which is the Tuesday of a week.
Tuesday, then the agenda goes live on Friday, and then the meeting is on the following Wednesday.
During the workday, like.
It's during two to three, but that is up to, we could change that.
Yeah.
It's what's worked, we, it's not a specifically designated time, other than, once we know who the president and the clerk are, then we determine when are we going to meet.
And does the alternate clerk always attend the meetings?
It would only be in, yeah.
You couldn't attend the meeting as a third board member for the Brown.
That's right, right, thank you.
Yep, so the alternate would only attend in the event the clerk.
In the event of absence, okay.
I'll just start out by saying that I'd like to, you know, pass on this role this year. Not because I don't think I can do a good job in the role, or I don't appreciate the role, but my schedule is, is making it tougher and tougher to to make that for me right now, so.
Agenda plan?
Yeah, agenda plan, in general. And I think, I think that either Marie or Rachel would be, you know, or up to this task by a lot, either of you would do a great job, if you guys want, and as an alternate as well.
And I'm going to pass, because there is no way I can fit that in my work schedule right now. I think, Rachel, you would do a great job at that.
And then the only thing that you have to, you know, remember, is that, no one told me, but I had that experience as running a meeting. And so running a meeting is.
You had, you did it.
You gotta know how to be able to not only procedurally do it, which is fine, because you always have help. The one biggest thing that most people don't really think about, and I'll bring it out there in the beginning, is you need to control the room. And controlling the room is a big deal, and it starts to get out of hand like you see here. And when John got up to say something, no matter what it is, I always like to remind everybody that the minority voice is in a room like this is very, very difficult, and it takes a very strong person to come up and be an upset, you know, a different voice. And it's our job, and it's the board president's job, or whoever's running the meeting, to stand up for that person, no matter what they, what kind of room they're walking into, and the better job that you can do to control our business and our meeting, and not let that take over, is a really, is an important aspect to the job, in my opinion, just something to think about.
You are selling it very well to Rachel.
There is.
With ready for a leadership opportunity, I can see that.
And there is a lot of, there is a lot of support, I've got, I was just about to pull out my, you know, five-page scripts that I have. You know, we worked, we worked when I came into this role to have just the mechanics of it down, which is all really good, and like I said, the the working relationship with Marcy in terms of helping guide through all of that, and even guiding through just the administration of what needs to get signed. And Teresa has been phenomenal with getting us what we need to get signed, when we need to get signed, and the act of having all that stuff at night before, like during the night, so if we're taking action, it's just super well organized for us to act, so.
I would, I would be willing to take that on.
Okay.
I might have to step off of some of the other committees I'm serving on, because it's a lot of meetings to be going to, especially like if I'm having to take down my bulk of work, so I need to take that into consideration, so I know that's the next meeting, but.
Which I do think leads us to an alternate.
Let's see, do we have any other nominations for a clerk?
I'm, I, if you could step into it, that would be.
Yeah, exactly. So Rachel, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Alrighty, so we will take action on the nominee for clerk for the Board of Trustees as Rachel Litwack. And can we have a motion?
I make a motion.
And I'll second. And all in favor, Marie?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Oh, abstain, I guess. Yeah. It'd be weird. It'd be weird.
Alrighty, and then now, I'm moving on to an alternate uh, for the office of the clerk. Um, I also wanna add um, to that it is, uh, serving as an alternate would also help for any future round. Um, well, not any, because we have to do this annually. So the next year's round of getting to know kind of the inner workings of the board in preparation for meetings, so that should there be um, any change, um, then a person might feel uh, comfortable to take on the role of the clerk or the role of the uh, president. Or even stepping into Marin County School Boards Association. So being um, as an alternate helps to, I think, get up to speed related to um, the board meetings and um, in the event that the clerk is unable to attend and that kind of thing. Um, so. Um, I think the clerk role is gonna be valuable uh, to our school district. It may never be needed. Uh, sorry, the um, alternate. It might not be needed. Um, but in the event that it is, we'll be ready for it. Um, so do we have any nominations for the um, alternate?
Would, do we need Chris? I'm looking over Chris.
A lot of eyeballs looking at me. Yeah, I would be very uh, honored and willing to step in and fill that gap and to help Rachel.
Thank you.
Especially given the time commitments, you know, that Marie and Ryan have on their jobs, a problem.
And I do think it would be a really good way to kind of
Yeah.
Just be an easy way to ease into kind of understanding
A good one.
All of the logistics and stuff.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Alright, any other nominations for alternate clerk? There are none. Chris, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Then I will make a motion for Chris to be our alternate.
Second.
Clerk. Ryan seconds.
And all those in favor, Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
Abstain.
Marie?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Alright, and last but not least is our representative to the Marin County School Boards Association. Um, this is uh, serving um, as a representative to attend the meetings. They are monthly. And also there is, are typically two dinner meetings a year um, that are held by all of the representatives for the Marin County School Boards Association. And um, as some of what you have seen at all of these meetings where there are the committee report outs, there typically is one of the countywide committees, whether it's Golden Bell or um, the E2 or uh, J-LAC. There's a, a lot of discussion about what occurs in those. And um, it really helps to create that cross section of ideas across school districts between trustees. And so um, it is um, a valuable and an important.
Yeah, I've been enjoying.
Yeah, you've been liking it, Marie?
I've been enjoying it very much. And but fair enough, um, um, would like the idea of having someone backing me up if there was something going on that I can't attend. But I've been really enjoying being part of that group.
Is there anything else about the group that you could describe or explain that?
This is, this is definitely uh, a place where people uh, connect and um, discuss ideas and support each other. Uh, I've met some candidates of other boards from in, in other, you know, um, part of the county. And um, as, as opposed to J-LAC, I was also part of J-LAC, um, this group actually meeting in person, which actually work better for me because I can actually meet, meet people and, and, and connect in person, which has been very valuable for me. Um.
When are the meetings?
Hmm?
When, what?
They are in general in evening. They are like, where or when?
Where, like what's the cadence? Like it's the third Thursday of the month or something?
No, no, no. It's just like two to three times a year. It's not very often.
Okay, so this hasn't been monthly. Oh, it hasn't?
No, no, no. It's not.
Oh, I see. J-LAC. That's mine.
J-LAC is monthly.
J-LAC is monthly.
You're right.
J-LAC is monthly at eight thirty.
Yeah, you go to those meetings. I don't. I go to J-LAC.
Correct. I go to, to the other one. And that has been a source of um, you know, yeah, it is, it's really um, networking and identifying topics that will end up being discussed at J-LAC. Kind of it's a feeder to other committees, to be honest. Um, and of uh, of uh, talking about what matters to, interestingly enough, what matters to all the boards in Marin. You know, there have been some, some work being done there around that and identifying the, the leaders amongst the leaders. Uh, and some of them are emerged to be um, to move from one trustee position to another one in, you know, in the county. Or this is when you, 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 you can, yeah, you, you have an understanding of the dynamic between all the trustees. Because we have, I think we're something like 100 trustees in Marin or close to that. So we're definitely a big group. And, and having a chance to meet them um, is, has been valuable. Certain of the meetings are actually open to everybody, right? What I'm saying. So it's not like uh, to all, to all the trustees. And those, uh, those events, I've seen there, you know, you, you have come, uh, Rachel has come. So I think there is, it has been uh, a little bit of this. Um, there is a dinner going on and everybody's going and we have enjoyed getting there together very much. So um, yeah.
Are you open to staying on if there's an alternate?
Yeah.
To back you up?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the idea of an alternate is, is, is never a bad idea. So, but I've, I've been happy to go there. Um, I've never missed any of those for sure. Social in person, you got room.
Well, it was really helpful. And like I got to meet trustee candidates for other districts that, you know, like the Tam Union District candidates. I, I got to meet other people and it was really helpful because, you know, it's very informal and they were talking about other ideas for districts, but it was also nice to meet the people who are running for other positions.
Correct.
It was nice to have that individual contact with them and like, okay, you're worth voting for or not or whatever.
It was a bit of that network.
Yeah, so if you're willing to stay on as the lead, then I would nominate you to stay on as the lead unless there's anyone else you'd like to move into that. I'm guessing.
Happy.
Not. Okay.
Do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Wonderful. Then um, a motion?
I move, I'm the lead um, elector to serve on MCA.
I'll second.
And all those in favor, Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Marie?
Abstain.
Alrighty, and so now for um, the alternate uh, to the MCSBA. Do we have a nomination for an alternate?
Eyes almost. Chris, Rachel, if someone wants to be, yeah, is thinking about, uh, wanted to be meet other members of the trustee community.
Are these evening events usually?
Yeah, that's going to be like kind of a five to seven.
Five to seven. And I.
And it's like three times a year.
Three times a year.
Uh, mainly it's going to be, I think we have in general met at the um,
McGinnis, McGinnis Park. Go Park for the like, the dinner, the dinner events, there's like, like you said, it's like four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, but if it's an alternate, you're doing the.
Correct.
That you're eating.
Yeah.
I would happily please step into that role as the alternate.
This is a great opportunity.
Are you nominating?
Uh, yes. I've nominated Chris.
Okay, so Marie will nominate Chris.
I'll second.
Oh, she has to accept first.
Do you accept that?
I do accept.
I, I anticipated.
You knew what was happening based on the conversation. Alrighty then, um, take a vote, Marie?
Aye.
Wait, do we have to move?
Oh wait, sorry, move. Sorry. Yes, um, just move.
Move.
I moved that we elect Chris to serve in that role.
Rachel moves, Ryan seconds. And then all in favor, Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
And Chris?
Abstain.
Alright, wonderful. Okay, so what we will do um, is uh, make sure that you have a calendar of uh, the meetings for the year. Um, and we'll also talk regarding the um, continued agenda planning. We'll revisit those to see um, if they work um, for, for um, the clerk and the president. So we'll, we'll get on that. Um, and then the MCSBA meetings are set, so we'll be sure that you, Marie and um, Chris know when those meetings are throughout the, for the year. Alrighty, so wonderful. Thank you so much for um, everything that you all do and for taking on these elected positions. And then don't forget, there's more coming in January.
But it's not as official as this.
But not as official. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Alright, and so, oh, sorry.
That's your job. Uh, so, and so, uh, moving on to agenda item G3, which is recommended approval of the 2022-2023 first interim budget report. And we will have a presentation. Chris Carson, please um, let us know what's happening with our first interim budget report. This is a uh, discussion and we will be taking action to approve the first interim.
Correct. And uh, I did remove my mask just because I can't speak very well without being able to read and I can't read too with my mask on. So thank you this evening for the opportunity to discuss the first interim budget report. Uh, what we'll be discussing this evening are uh, our budget information, uh, just like timelines and that type of thing. Uh, our demographics that we have built into our budget, uh, the overall assumptions, the revenues and expenses and our multi-year projections and ending balances. Uh, first, what I wanted to talk about is our budget timeline. And the timelines, um, we have really um, for budgets that we do every year. And you can think about them coming up about every three months. Well, they really are every three months. And so what we have right now is our December 15th uh, requirement for our first interim budget. And that includes our actual data as of October 31st. Uh, and our next budget will be our second interim in March, followed by what's called our uh, adopted budget and also our estimated actuals that has to be by the end of June. And uh, we have our, how we close our books for the previous year, our unaudited actuals in September. Starting to use my computer to change. Whenever you look at a budget, our interim budgets, we have to certify to the the County Office of Education in the state, um, whether we are positive, qualified or negative. And the reason for that is we have to tell them whether we can meet our expenses moving forward. And a positive certification means that we will meet our expenses in the current year and subsequent two fiscal years. A qualified budget means that uh, we may not be able to meet those um, financial obligations as we move forward into those out years. And a negative declaration means that we will not, absent uh, very large changes in our budget, uh, meet those obligations. And so the one that you really wanna see every single time is a positive certification. And what you have uh, before you this evening is a positive certification. Yes.
And just um, process wise, if it comes someplace else. So we certify a positive, qualified or negative. Then once we adopt this, it goes to the Marin County Office of Education. They check, they check that our certification is valid with the assumptions that we have. And then just so everyone else knows, I as board president get a letter back from the Marin County Office of Education, which is fairly detailed and shows me how they do all of their checks and balances against what we put forward here. So that's kind of the next steps process wise after this.
Yeah, and they always have one month after our deadline to get that to us.
Yeah.
And they're certifying to basically the state that we concur uh, with the district or if, if they don't agree with us, they'll kick the budget back to us and make us make some form of a revision.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's pretty rare that that happens and it's generally because there's some large mistakes in your budget.
But that is part of our judiciary role is to make sure that we're not missing something and it doesn't get came back. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
I've seen it.
And so the next thing that we have is our demographics. And uh, we, we look at demographics in terms of our enrollment and our attendance. And uh, what I wanted to talk about is first, our uh, our enrollment at first interim budget is actually 1724. And what we had shown at our adopted budget was 1682. So our, our numbers are coming in better than what we hadn't anticipated in our budget, which is really good news. And so at, at first interim, we have a report that we have to, to complete and it's called our CBEDS, um, which is California Basic Educational Data. Uh, and part of that is we have to provide a detailed uh, listing to the state of our enrollment. And it's not final yet. It's actually final on Friday. But we have preliminary information and that's what we use to base these numbers on. And so when you look at it, you do, the one thing that you also noticed, um, when looking back between just to the left of the arrow, you'll see the 1764. That was the number that we had um, last year. And so we are declining over the previous year. But our numbers are coming in a little bit better than anticipated. Part of the reason that you're seeing that jump though, is because we do have the new um, uh, transitional kindergarten program that is being rolled out, so that eventually it'll be uh, fully implemented. And so some of those numbers are in there. Uh, but then we also have a little bit more students in other pockets of um, of grades.
When on this does the um, I know we're still in the, not whole harmless, but the state had done a three-year rolling average because of the COVID situation. When does that, where, between which of these bars does that end and we go back to the regular counting?
It's actually in all three years of our multi-year projections. And you'll see that, I we move on just real fast because I think I might have that in here.
Yeah, it's fading out.
Yeah. Actually, this is our actual attendance. This is not.
Get to it whenever.
It's within our, within our funded ADA. So there is a difference between our funded AD, average daily attendance, ADA, and our um, actual counts.
Got it.
And it's based upon what you were talking about. Um, and so when we look at our average daily attendance, our average daily attendance is a uh, a factor of our enrollment. It isn't the actual um, enrollment. So there is a discrepancy, a difference between the two. Our average daily attendance is a measurement of all the children that come every single day. And so if you're absent, you don't get counted. And so you're not part of that average daily attendance for that particular day. And so you would always expect to see a number less than our enrollment for our average daily attendance. And so based upon the increases in enrollment, we do increase our average daily attendance estimates. And so you'll notice that we do uh, have uh, those going up in each of our uh, budget years. Uh, again, our budget is a three-year projection. It's the current fiscal year and subsequent two years. And so those numbers uh, do change. The other thing that I did is I did adjust our, our average daily attendance slightly in the out years.
Yeah.
Uh, back up to what has been our traditional historical attendance rates.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what has happened over the last several years is our average daily attendance rates have been um, dropping because of COVID. And so we're expecting it to go up just a little bit more in those out years.
So with the TK being added in, is the state funding us for the four-year-olds or, or I know in the past they were not funding until the children turned five. Is that, where is that now that they're requiring us to do TK?
They're slowly rolling that out. So um, eventually TK will be a full grade level, just as a kindergarten. So you'll have 12 months worth of children in there.
Okay.
Who will be four.
Who will be four.
Will be four.
And they'll be funding off. Okay.
And so it's a four-year.
So it's a roll again, sort of process?
It's a four-year rollout.
Okay. Thank you.
And I apologize, I didn't include the funded ADA within this. I, I know I included funded ADA within my actual write-up. It just isn't in my presentation.
Sure.
And you can actually, yeah, you, you can actually see, and, and the important thing to note is there is a discrepancy, a difference between funded average daily attendance and the average daily attendance at what we call the P2 attendance date. P2 attendance is um, your average daily attendance through um, the end of March in essence. And that's really what the bulk of our attendance is on, uh, how we measure. And so you would take that number every year. And what we're being funded on, or in the past what we were funded on for funded ADA was the um, greater of our prior year average daily attendance or current year average daily attendance. And what that did is it allowed, if you were in declining enrollment and your attendance was dropping, it allowed you to be funded in arrears for one year based upon the higher number. In June, what the state did is they went through and they changed that because what they were seeing is those attendance rates were dropping pretty substantially across the state. It wasn't unique to, to the Ross Valley School District. It was every district in the state. And so what they did is they made it so that it was, you're gonna be funded on your uh, the higher of what we were before, which is the. your, the higher of what we were before, which is the prior year average daily attendance, the current year average daily attendance, or the three-year average of your prior three years. And so, what that did is it made your numbers go up in terms of your average daily attendance for funded ADA. And so, again, you've got that number that you're funded on versus what you're actually at.
Kind of softened the decline that was hitting from COVID.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. It's working.
I just did it again, I'm trying to change this on my computer. In, in terms of our actual assumptions, we, we have cost of living adjustments that, what we call COLAs, that are included as increases to our local control funding formula revenues every year. And it's, there, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but the biggest single factor is your consumer price index, the California Consumer Price Index. And so, there's a pretty close tie to that. And so, in the current year, what we're actually being funded is at 13.26% above what we were in prior year. Now, that's our funded COLA, but that's not what the actual COLA is. And you can see it noted down below, the actual COLA for the current year is only 6.56%. But the difference between the two is what they are terming like a super COLA. So, it's a, an additional amount that the state gave us at June, above and beyond what we had anticipated coming in. They were talking about it, but you can't really put it into your budget since it's such a large percentage until it's been approved. So, one of the things that you will know when looking at our revenues is there's been a large change in our revenues and a lot of it has to do with that right there. But then, the other thing that's important to note is looking at your property taxes. And we were looking at going into community-funded status in the current year based upon our property tax increases outpacing these cost of living adjustments and also changes in our average daily, funded average daily attendance. And you can see that they've changed those structures. And so, we'll talk about that in just a minute, but it is important to, to know what those percentages are as we move forward. You can see the California Consumer Price Index is really closely tied to that COLA down below, the 6.56 versus the COLA 6.56. The other things that are important to note, and that's because we've had some large changes in our pension systems increases, is what are the state teacher retirement systems? That's the state pension for the teachers and the public employee retirement system, which is the pension for classified staff. The other thing that has happened over the last several years is the state unemployment insurance has actually increased. And so, it's important to note what that is. And it's, it's going to be dropping back down to lower levels. It won't get back to where it was prior to several years ago when COVID hit and they increased those percentages, but it is dropping again. So, those are some important assumptions to, to know and understand that are built into our multi-year projections that you're looking at.
And super COLA, when it was approved by the state, was a one-time-only kind of deal.
Correct.
And that's reflected here, which was something that came up in the JF, poured out was they were very much also like, hey, everybody, that was a one-time thing, make sure all of your boards know, you need to keep it, save it, don't spend it all in one place at one time because don't expect it. So, I'm seeing that you were not expecting it to continue is aligned with everything that I've been married to.
Yeah. And then, if you were to look at the Legislative Analyst Office, LAO, they're an entity that takes a look at all of our budgets at the state level. And they're anticipating that the COLA for next year will actually be 3% greater than, than what we're showing at 23, 24. But we also heard today at our chief business official meeting at the county, don't expect that to be fully funded. We're going to potentially enter a situation again where your, your funded COLA is different than the statutory COLA and it's probably going to be under. So, it might reverse from that 13.26 and looking at that 5.38 and potentially moving to 8.38. Don't expect to get that. So, then, as we actually look at our revenues and expenses, I'd like to, to show it in terms of a pie chart just because it's really critical to, to note that the LCFF is our single largest source of revenues. But if you look, our second largest source of revenues is actually our parcel tax thing to our, the voters of the Ross Valley School District. And so, that's a critical component of our budget. And then, in terms of the other sources, we have a fair amount of state and federal revenues. And those won't continue forever. A lot of those are COVID dollars. But we also had some new, a new block grant that came in this year, which was $1.1 million for us, the instructional materials, art, music block grant. So, we'll be talking about that more as we move forward. In terms of expenses, you can very clearly see that our single largest source of expenses is salaries and benefits. And that's to be expected because we are a business, so to speak, about people. We educate children and so, we are a people entity and you would expect us to see that in terms of salaries and benefits and that's what you see. So... And then, moving on into our multi-year projections, this is actually where I was, wanted to talk very quickly about us remaining in community funding status. What you'll notice is I've listed some numbers down.
Remaining in state aid status.
Oh, I'm sorry, state aid from community funding.
Like what?
My apologies.
No problem.
What you'll notice is at the bottom, I've listed some, some numbers. And I've shown this chart before to think of it in terms of a weight. And our numbers are driven off of these things. And so, as you look, the LCFF COLA is 13.36%. That's larger than the 6.84%, so that's going to weigh more towards the state aid. The other thing is that funded COLA, because of the change in the way we, we are funded, that weighs down onto that side as well. And as a result, within our multi-year projections, we are expected at this particular juncture to stay in state aid for the three years. It doesn't mean that we're not going to potentially move closer. But based upon, based upon the numbers that we know right now, we are expected to. And so, kind of going into the status of the LCFF funding, you see again, our multi-year projections with those cost of living adjustments, our property taxes. And here, I do show your funded ADA. You can see the funded ADA does increase in each of those three years versus our actual ADA. And those are increased over what I had at budget adoption as well. And you can see our, as a result of that, our LCFF revenues at the first interim are substantially higher than what we had in all three years for our adopted budget. And as a result, we're staying in state aid for those three years. And then, specifically looking at our multi-year projections and what that does to our fund balances, we do have excess revenues over expenses in our, in our general fund every year, except in that third year of the multi-year projection. What I do want to say is even though it's showing as a deficit, the, really what that deficit in, is in, is on the categorical side, the restricted fund balance, balances, we're spending those down. We actually, within our multi-year projections, are positive in all three years on the unrestricted side. And so, you do see that reflected as you look at your unrestricted reserve percentages. And you see that it's actually just slightly higher in the third year of that multi-year projection in 24, 25. And that's how that, that functions. So, it's important to know what those percentages are. We do have a requirement in the state of California to have, for district our size, to have a 3% of our general fund in our reserves. But we also have a board policy that says that we will have an additional 7%. And that amounts to 10%. And those numbers you do see are, they are higher. A lot of that has to do with where we've been with COVID, where they're giving us additional dollars in LCFF revenues because they're holding us harmless. We're not feeling the impacts of those revenue drops for the, the loss of enrollment and attendance. We, we will eventually see that reverse and you start to see that in your, in your ending balances as you move forward. We're not fully back to where we would be normally until after 25, or into the 25, 26 fiscal year. So, there still is that cliff. But what the state has done is they've been able to push off that cliff, not just for the Ross Valley School District, but for a large number of districts around the state by putting together that three-year average. That doesn't mean that you have huge amounts of dollars to give, you know, for, for other things because eventually those dollars will come out of your budget. So, it's just important to note that. And with that, do I have any, do you have any questions?
Anybody have any?
It's very easy to follow once you've been following it. For me, these are really easy to see now. My first budget that I saw at my first meeting was like a little over my head. But one thing that I will remind everybody is that although this may look great today, it's a moving target, this is a living document. And I remember my first time, I saw it like we're supposed to fall off a cliff in three years. And then, three months later, it change, it just constantly changes. But it's nice to know that it's, it's very clear to understand and it looks like we're doing our due diligence to make sure we're healthy with an eye on the future. So, great, great work, very presented very well.
Chris, I have a question, just what is the 170,000 capital outlay consistently exactly?
So, the district is required to set aside 3% of our unrestricted general fund for what's called routine restrictive maintenance account, R, RMA. And that gets set into a restricted program, which is your, basically your maintenance program. You also have to pay for deferred maintenance dollars out of that. And so, we have a carryover in that, in those funds. We haven't spent all of them. And so, what we're looking at doing is starting to spend those on things like roofs and, which is actually something I was going to be coming back to the governing board to, to get, seek authorization to go out for bids. We need to do actual maintenance work on our, on our facility.
On the infrastructure.
Infrastructure, correct.
Like, things like termites and multi-pounds.
Yeah.
So, we're unexpected and that kind of stuff.
No. One of the things that I'm going to be sitting down with our director of Maintenance and Operations, Desmond Kizok, is to look at our facility needs as a whole and start to prioritize things like painting, roofs, asphalt, needs of the district that, that are required. But what those again are, are carryover dollars that are specific to the routine restrictive maintenance account. So, those are dollars that are carried over on the categorical side.
Yeah, I was also just going to echo Ryan. I know that a lot of the stuff is stuff that we hear at every interim, you know, every interim and every year. And that's okay because it, you know, because it does become familiar to us and hopefully anyone else who's looking at it, it becomes kind of a familiar thing and it's a lot easier to look at and understand and just having looked at that, like seeing that, when I first came in, as you mentioned, Ryan, that those red numbers were like.
Yeah.
Right, it was like you had three years of those red numbers and I was like, ah! So, it's one, it's nice to be able to see the transition of like, now I understand that it's getting pushed out, but that it doesn't disappear and you can kind of, and seeing those patterns. So, it's nice to see that the intention of the state to soften the cliff is actually transpiring into the reality in our, in our budgets, that it is softening that, that enrollment phase to ADA cliff and, but then knowing that, okay, it's, it's still impacting it and you, like you said, you can kind of start peeking at it in the 24, 25 and then it'll still continue on after that. So, while we don't have to be like hair on fire about it, we still need to be mindful. So, I appreciate, and I do appreciate your approach to those kinds of things of like, you don't have to freak out, but we do need to be thoughtful and mindful and looking ahead. So, that shows up here. Thanks. Got it. Is this the time that we have to do that yet?
We don't have to do it now, the next item is 20 minutes long, anticipated to be.
Why don't we close this up and then do that?
Okay.
Any other, are there any other questions? Do we want, and it's okay if you have clarification questions, Chris, this is totally fine to ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Chris and Marcy are also super helpful.
Awesome.
If you want to ask whenever, they really, really helping you, you know, to, you got background, but it's good to.
Thank you.
If you do have a question on that, please feel free to, to email it to, to Marcy or I and we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So, that, with that, it is an action item for us to approve the interim budget report so that we can send that off to, to you.
Just wanted to note, there's no one in the public room.
Oh, thank you.
For public comments?
And there's, thank you for that.
And it hasn't been for quite some time?
Yes, we, we do not have any, any public here for public comments, so I have not asked for it in the past couple of items and we don't have any public here again tonight for that. So, we can go right to the motion, thank you.
I move that we approve the first interim budget report as presented to us tonight.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, so we'll do a vote. Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
All right, we have an approved first interim budget report. So, now, we do need to stop because we have a procedure where we don't go past 10:30. And we do have.
Unless the board.
Unless we, unless we stop and approve that we can take a vote to pass 10:30. We've got the next assessment information at 20 minutes, 20, 30. Yeah, we've, we've got 20, 30 for sure, consent 30, 40, 50. We might be able to make it, but it might be a squeak. So, if we could have approval to maybe go, oh gosh, no, it is 10 o'clock.
It's because that clock is wrong, that one's wrong.
The clock is wrong, I have to look at my watch, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it is just about 10 o'clock, so I do, we do need to do this. And we will continue to move forward. So, we've taken a motion to extend past 10:30.
Did you see Ryan?
I know. Ryan, you want, do you want to make that motion?
No.
No, you don't, okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we continue the meeting past 10:30 as necessary.
Okay.
Leave it to Ryan to second, I'm not seconding.
Well, I'll second and we'll see if it passes and if not, then we can't. So, I will second it and let's go ahead and, I will second it with the, I will keep this moving so that hopefully if it does, we don't have to go that much farther. But I don't want to abruptly stop in the middle of something at 10:30, so. Rachel?
Aye.
Shelley?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, Ryan?
Nay.
Interesting.
I'm here, aye. I don't know if it's just done.
All right.
Just keep going.
We'll keep going. And duly noted of the non-anamis, so we'll keep moving. All right, so next one is the assessment data update, 22 assessment data update. And this is Julia, sorry.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
All right. So, this evening's report is to provide an overall, overview of our assessment data for 2022. And this is in alignment with our LCAP goals. And I just wanted to point out, well, goal one is around assessing student learning in mathematics and English language arts, ELD, English Language Development and providing interventions and supports as needed. Then, goal two, that statement there is really important to us because not only is it the second goal of our LCAP, but it's also the opening statement of our Ross Valley School District racial equity mission statement. So, to create a safe, equitable, and inclusive learning environment in which all students feel a sense of belonging, are respected and celebrated for their individual differences, and are empowered to thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. And a reminder that the purpose of student assessment is to inform instruction. The more that we learn about our students, the better job we can do of teaching them. The more that we learn about our students, the better job we can do of teaching them. And our district uses multiple measures to monitor student learning and growth, including our state assessments, classroom assessments and informal assessments that happen over the course of the day. And we have district bench wide assessments. And all of these assessments contribute to form a more complete picture of each student as a learner. And just the diagram there pointing out that we assess before learning, those are diagnostics. We assess during learning. Those are those formative assessments that help us determine next steps and and really identify skills and concepts that kids may need more support with. And then our summative assessments that come at the end of a particular learning unit. And this slide is just a reminder that included in the CASP is English Language Arts and Mathematics and also Science. And on the CASP, students score in one of four levels. Standard exceeded and standard met are the levels that we are going for. So most of what you're going to see in terms of data comes as the percentage of students who performed either at the met or exceeded level. Alrighty, so here's some data. This shows Ross Valley School District combined third through eighth grade students for met or exceeded beginning in twenty fifteen. And the red line that you see there divides really the pre pandemic and the post pandemic scores. And so you can see that in ELA, it's, it's pretty, and you can see the, the graph below, of course, shows the same thing. Pretty, pretty steady performance. And then a drop in twenty twenty one. In twenty twenty one, we were not required to administer the CASP. We could have selected to use a local assessment, but we went ahead and did administer the CASP. And then you can see that we're, we've got an uptick there for twenty twenty two, which is great to see that grow. So at this point, at seventy four percent met and exceeded in ELA, we're about four percentage points below where we were before the pandemic. And then also a similar change in terms of mathematics. And then this slide shows a comparison of how Ross Valley does compared to the whole county of Marin and the state of California. And you can see that the the change pre pandemic to post pandemic with mathematics as well is a little bit better than the county and state. And in science, actually really strong, we stayed the same in our fifth grade science assessment. The CASP, the science assessment is administered in fifth and eighth grade only. But we actually have had an increase in eighth grade, which I would say is, is likely because of the years that we've now spent really understanding the next generation science standards and GSS. Pre pandemic, we really had only had maybe a couple of years to grapple with them and it's, it was a big shift. So we're getting better.
Yeah.
Alrighty, and then this shows our scores in comparison to local schools and school districts that are more similar in terms of size, in terms of enrollment, student body and percentages of students who are in the free and reduced who, who have some economic need. And you can see with the graph below it, where the, the brighter blue is us. And
Thanks for putting me directly just next to you. I don't going to take it personally, but.
And I list Ross Valley twice.
Just noticing.
We have the charter on there because they serve many of the kids in the same community and they are, they only run K through fifth grade. So I also have the Ross Valley data there at the end for if we don't include our middle school students.
Yeah, we're going to do our comparison. So then, yeah. Thank you.
All right. So next we have cohort data and this is where we're following students. But I do want to emphasize that while we're talking about the same, roughly the same group of students here, clearly we're not talking about the same test and we're not talking about the same standards. And you'll notice in a moment, particularly in mathematics, there's a big change that happens on those assessments as kids get older. But I'm going to look at, for example, our current seventh grade there. So in, when they were in third grade, about seventy five percent of them met or exceeded the standards for English Language Arts. Same, now we have COVID and then they stayed right where, they stayed right at that seventy five percent and then in sixth grade dropped a little bit. And then when you look at the following year, you see something similar. Seventy six percent in third grade, eighty percent fourth grade. Fifth grade was, was the year of the pandemic and then you see a pretty big drop, but it's kind of also typical that the drop does take place in middle school. All right. And then, oh, and I should have said that, that final column there shows, you know, the, the difference between the current year and the last year before the pandemic. And you see a big drop there in mathematics, particularly for our current seventh and our current eighth graders, not for our current ninth graders. But for our current ninth graders, you're comparing fifth grade scores and eighth grade scores, which is where, and actually this next slide kind of explains it a little bit better. Here you can see the Ross Valley School District, Marin, the state and several of our similar school districts in the county and see how they, how their scores change over time. And generally you can see that there is a drop in middle school. I think we're, we're having some good conversations at the middle school around mathematics. What we're generally seeing is that the pandemic and kind of that uneven impact that it's had on our students because our students have very different circumstances depending on their family's circumstances. So some have, have more unfinished learning. We prefer to call it unfinished learning because they really didn't lose anything. They just didn't have as much opportunity. And what we've noticed is that our youngest kids reading is really the area where that took place. They're doing fine in mathematics and then with our older kids, we're seeing more of that in math. All right. And now we always want to look at our data by student group. And so the top line there you can see are all students. And then these different student groups that are very important to us. And these are really the kids. When you look at economically disadvantaged, our English learners, ever reals are students who are currently in the English learner program and have ever been a part of the English learner program. So you can see that as our kids become more and more multilingual, they're better able. Their performance increases. Not a surprise there. But this all goes straight back to our, our racial equity work and, and really the rest of our equity work where our goal is to decrease the predictability of student performance based on the circumstances that they're born with and, and live with. And so we spend a lot of time looking at these students. And same thing with math. Looking at those student groups. And what we also find is that the gap between all students and our student groups is greater in mathematics than it is in English Language Arts. And so that's another piece of really looking at what changes we can make to our mathematics program to make sure that we're supporting all of our students. Okay, so that's CASP data. Last year when I talked about, I talked about that as satellite data. It's the big view. It, it, you're seeing trends and it kind of helps you to unpack that. And next we have our local assessment data. This year we have, we're implementing a new data management system and right here I listed all of the different assessments that exist inside the system. And all of these are assessments that we were already giving our students. And the difference is that now when we input the assessments, the assessments immediately are aligned with the standards for either mathematics or English Language Arts and we get a lot of really good information. So that top graphic shows a single assessment for a third grade class. This is a spelling inventory. And it is tremendously useful for students. Because, because Ryan, I can't really leave the top For example, a teacher can see that she has a number of students struggling with unaccented syllables, N syllables and can then put a group together and put lessons together that are going to support students with that specific learning target. And same thing for math. You can see there we've got some K kids that need to play a little bit more with one to one correspondence, which is all about counting. So this has been really powerful. It's being used by our teachers and also by our intervention teachers and our EL teachers. All of our administrators have access to this data.
And your partner?
And sorry, actually was going to say that our MTSS partners are going in and coaching teachers about how to use the data. So they'll meet with the teacher, pull up the data and help them create strategy groups and give them some of those tier one scaffolds and lessons that can help support the students.
What's the name of the system we use?
Forefront.
Forefront, okay.
And this is what it looks like on the individual level. So this is a single student and these are all of their, all of the standards for mathematics. The gray ones have not yet been taught. And then what I did was I clicked on the one, I think it's measurement. And then it pulls up the, all of the data that helped the system to know what the proficiency level for this particular student on this standard is. And you can drill down further and see which questions they got wrong. It's really just a super powerful system that we're just starting to tap into. This is your one. But it's been really successful.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a similar system that we've been actually using for a few years now called ESGI and our TKK and first grade teachers all use this. A lot of your phonics and phonemic awareness, those assessments are all built into this system. So used in the same way. And then we've just started rolling out, actually on week two of Amplify is housing an assessment called DIBELS, which is a reading assessment, but also gives you information on dyslexia. So it's also a dyslexia screener. Many states are now requiring dyslexia screeners. It looks like California is moving in that direction. And so we, over the last couple of weeks, have been assessing every second grade student in the district. Our intervention teachers are running the assessments and then there are the MTSS partners again are supporting this effort. And so now we have more data that we can use to determine what students need.
That's awesome.
All right, next steps. So as always, we will continue to analyze all of our assessment data and use that to inform instruction. We continue to work on the refinement of our multi-tiered system of supports, our MTSS. Right now we have an MTSS team that's meeting once a month. Intervention teachers, EL teachers, MTSS partners, there's usually a principal present. Eric and I are there. We've been making a lot of curriculum decisions and implementing new programs. We're now using a program called Sande both in the resource program with our special education students and also in the intervention program. And we also are launching in January, a middle school math tutoring program, which is going to take place during the day. There will be about twenty kids engaged in this program and they'll be either having one to one tutoring or it'll be two students with one tutor, depending on who the kids are and what their needs are. So we're excited about that. And we have some middle school math professional development coming up. We're continuing to work with Fuana Win. And we also are piloting Desmos, which is a math curriculum that is really powerful. Desmos originally was not this fabulous online graphic calculator, but they've created really fabulous, standards aligned curriculum to go along with it. It's very engaging, very concept building and, and a lot of fun for kids. They really like it. And so we're going to have a training with Desmos professional developers later this year. And then also we just signed up our group of teachers and our White Hill administrators to participate in a standards based learning professional development opportunity with Marzano, who's a very big name in standards based learning. And that will take place in May and they will be working at White Hill on identifying priority standards and skills. And, oh, one more. And so when we talk about the MTSS, a portion of that is the RTI and this is, this graphic shows those levels of intervention, what we're doing within each of those levels, who's doing that work. And we always want to bring it back to that why, which is the statement that I made earlier in the presentation of we're doing this work to make sure that every single one of our Ross Valley School District students is successful academically and socially and emotionally. Any questions or thoughts that you would like to share?
Love it.
Any, anyone have any? Any questions? I mean, I'll, I'll just say again how much I also really appreciate, you had mentioned that one time when you did this, you talked about kind of that higher altitude patterns and then, and, and I continue to appreciate both the presentation that we get and then the approach to this in our district to be looking at both kind of those systemic high altitude patterns of student population groups and those kinds of things, but then also using the localized assessments to really provide teachers and support staff and, and TSS partners with the tools that they need to really focus. So it's like an each and all kind of approach. So it's the all students have and each student has their own, is, is getting what they need as well. So.
We're actually taking it what, so it's that, right, the satellite and the map and then we talk about street data?
Yeah.
And we're very excited. We've kicked off and we're going to be digging into on the PD day. All of our teachers in the district are doing work around focal students, which is a part of this learning partnership work that comes from Saretta Hammond, but it's really selecting a student that's representative of other kids that have these needs and going really deep to, to, to fully understand all the complexities that are a part of who our kids are when they show up and what those teaching moves need to be, what their learning moves are. The teachers will be working with students and creating this pact with them and creating a goal and monitoring that while really deepening their relationship with their kids. So we're excited about that as well.
I heard other districts talking about the focal student approach. Is it TAM unified that's, has that, or it seems like there's a couple of other?
Sure, but very likely.
I didn't know. Any other questions? And as always, if you, if something comes up afterwards and you want to follow up with Marcy to get more information from any of the staff on any of these topics.
Glad to see the dyslexia screener. It's something that Eric and you have talked about. So I'm glad to see that it's happening.
Yes.
So that's exciting.
As a visual learner, I find that a great way for me to take in the data. And it's the data that I really appreciate of anything that we do here. That's the data that I personally appreciate the most is to see how kids are doing. And the way it was presented was very easy to follow for my very slow brain. In, in, in regards to stuff I don't think about every day. So when I, I'm able to dive into that data, I can really just see it. I, it was very, it was very, it's very well put together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Okay, so discussion, no action being needed on that. We have two other items that are just discussion information that have to be presented to us, but there's no action to be. Okay, so you can just, I believe these are both, we have we have a series of things that just come up regularly that need to be presented, so these are familiar. And Chris, I'm looking at you as.
Yes, they are both mine. Would you mind opening up the second document on the developer fee?
And again, I'm not going out for public comment because there's no public here, so.
Go to the second page, Teresa. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss the next agenda item. We have a requirement to provide to the public and to the governing board by December thirtieth of each year, our developer fees that were collected in the last year and how we spent them. And so what we're presenting to you this evening is just how we, how much money we received in our developer fees, and then how we actually spent those dollars and what developer fees are. Anytime somebody does construction within the area that we govern, they have to pull a permit with the the town or the county that they're in, and they have to pay their fees to for the development, but they also have to pay school fees for anything that is built. And we have a specific fund that we have to keep those dollars in, and we have to spend those on projects for facilities that would be housing those children that would result from those new projects. And so last year, we did receive sixty two thousand five hundred and twenty seven dollars, had a little bit of interest income, and so a total of just under sixty three thousand dollars. And we spent out a little over fifteen thousand dollars. And so we do have, if you could just scale down, there you go. We do have, at the end of last year, a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in that particular fund. And if you do look at our funds that we have, it's fund twenty five within the financials that were presented earlier. And so this is just to present it to you this evening, this will be coming back to you at the January board meeting where you'll approve the resolution. And so that's all there is for this evening.
Thanks.
Preview.
And then there's the measure E parcel tax at the end, unless there's any other questions.
No.
Alright, so measure E partial.
And the next agenda item is just an accounting of how we spent our, if you could pull that up as well, how we spent our parcel tax dollars last fiscal year. And so we just present this to the governing board and the public, and we did receive just under four point four million dollars, you see that up at the top, and then how we actually spent those dollars. One of the requirements that we have within the the bond language is that none of those dollars are to be spent on pension costs. And so we do transfer all those dollars out. And so we did spend all those dollars for the certificated salaries and benefits that you see that are listed. And also, we do charge to that particular those dollars, the collection fees that we have with the county as well, and so you'll see that. So those are the only fees that you see that are non-salary and benefits related. And so that's how we spent our dollars last fiscal year.
Are the collection fees something that the county assessor recorder's office charges us to collect on our behalf, and then we have to pay them for that service?
Correct.
Oh, interesting, okay. Does this come back to us with resolution or no?
No, this is just information only, and there is no action item on it at all. We present it every year.
Great. Any other questions on this item? Okay. So we are on to the consent actions, of which there are six. And are there any questions, clarifications on any of these consent items?
No.
I've looked at them and they're all, you know, our standard business operations items that go on consent. Then we can entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one.
I make a motion to approve all consent actions as described in section H.
I will second it.
Motion, motion in a second, we'll go ahead, do a real call, vote, Marie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
I, can Chris vote if she hasn't been around for these?
They are action or consent on this agenda, and she is now. And you can abstain if you wish, you don't have to, in this case.
I will abstain.
Okay.
And, aye.
Okay, on to the superintendent and cabinet report.
Alrighty, I think, just given the time this evening, and to make sure that we can get to another item, I'd like to see Eric. You didn't have an agenda item tonight, do you have any updates that you would like to provide the board?
I have a lot to talk about, but I can do it in about forty five seconds.
That's appreciated. I'll be having Brian on here and myself.
Real quick, we had a great deal, as as Rachel mentioned, TAM adult ed. And and the key thing is we're gonna, and we sent out via snail mail invitations and information about the ESL classes they're trying to offer, and they're trying to build a cohort around Archie Williams instead of in Mark's, so it's closer. So we're gonna keep trying to help them build numbers, dyslexia piece. And we've been working with the MTSS team to get them folded in with UCSF. We're a year and a half in their beta study, and they're calling their their universal screener multitudes. So version one's coming out for kindergarten, first grade next year, we're one of thirty five schools that is participating in this beta study. And so they're making up kind of a community of of practice to essentially kind of learn how to implement it starting next year, so that's gonna be really exciting. And that's all I got.
Alright, Julia, anything else to update on? Chris?
Just to reiterate that I anticipate bringing back to the governing board in January, an item to go out to bid for the construction projects that we were talking about, which would be for the routine maintenance projects that would be identified as needs of the district.
I think as some of the ones that we're going to do have already been discussed, I'll just wrap up with just being grateful for you all, for all of our employees who have put so much dedication and commitment, as well as all of you, and for Chris coming on board with us, really glad to have you. And all of our students and our families, the kids have been working really hard this year, and we're, you know, about a third of the way through. And we have a lot more school left to do this year, so we've got a remainder of the year ahead. I certainly hope that with the increase in all of the illnesses that folks have been experiencing, that we don't see an increase with the two weeks of winter break, that our kids will be healthy, families will be healthy, employees will be healthy, all of you will be healthy. This is our last meeting of two thousand and twenty two. And we'll be looking forward to our first meeting of two thousand and twenty three on January eleventh. And with that, just wish you all the best, and I hope you enjoy this winter break with your families and friends, and you stay healthy and safe and enjoy, so we can get back to this work in the new year.
Let's go.
That's great to be back to you. The only other thing I have to add for the meeting debrief and future board topics and board direction with respect to the new year that Maria and I had been talking about was a board retreat in the new, sometime early on in the new year, maybe the end of January, maybe February, so we'll start having conversations with with you all about timing and availability and that kind of stuff, but it's really a retreat for us to just reconnect on how the meetings are running, how we work, you know, our shared expectations of each other and how things are working. With that respect, I know some of you attended the board governance best practices workshop thing, and so kind of looking over any of that. And then also time for us to talk about our alignment with the school's LCAP priorities and the racial the racial equity mission statement, and then talking about how we as a board can work in furtherance of that with our board goals, aligning with those and how we want to, how we want to show up with that. I mean, we do the work and we are supporting that, but are there ways that we want to be engaged in that in other ways? So it'll be more of that kind of just relationship building and talking about how we're working and how to work procedurally with things that show up that we need to work with and any questions that we have, so we'll be in touch. But that'll be in the new year. Excellent. And yes, you'll have to bake some more fudge.
What cookies and lunch and that kind of stuff.
Are there any other? We have three minutes. We're gonna make it. We're gonna make it. We have our last three minutes, are there any other future topics or pending kind of conversations that you'd like us to maybe think about for that retreat? Anything that comes to mind, coming on new with a fresh perspective, that would be helpful. And if you can't think of it now, again, you can always get in touch later, get back at least ten thirty.
Exactly, I have some ideas, but I need to sleep on it.
I'm just gonna wait.
Don't push it, miss. We got you elected for one more year.
You can have the PowerPoint presentation that I bought.
No.
So on that note, I am going to adjourn the meeting at ten twenty eight.
Awesome.